To review our annual, district annual report, to review our performance from the 2021-2022 school year. There we go, thank you. This report is required by Texas Education Code. We're going to review reports that are produced at the state. We are not going to show reports at the education service and our region level, but we will be talking about our district. And then, school levels reports are also produced through the Texas Academic Performance Report. Data is disaggregated by student groups and race ethnicities. And this report is not a substitute for our goal monitoring report that is also occurring this evening during the main session. So we'll look here at our enrollment by race ethnicity. HISD is on the left, our state demographics are on the right. HISD serves a larger percentage of Hispanic and African-American students than the state serves. When we look at district enrollment, we can see our declines in enrollment, things that we have been talking about throughout the year, our declines in enrollment. However, even with those declines, we have a lot, an increase in concentration in our ELEB, our emergent bilingual enrollment, and an increase in our special education enrollment. When we look at enrollment by economically disadvantaged status, we can see here that in HISD, we educate a larger percent of students who live in poverty than the state by almost 20 percentage points. We look at our enrollment by two of our special programs, emergent bilingual and special education. We have a larger percent of emergent bilingual students by almost 15 percentage points than the state. And although the percent of students through, served through special ed has increased, as we saw previously, HISD still serves a lower percentage of, of students in special education services than the state. When we look at our district performance on STAR, we can see increases across the board in all subject areas, but we still are performing slightly lower than the state. Here, we're going to start a series of slides looking at each of our content areas. This one shows our ELA and reading content area. We're looking at data for student scoring at the MEETS grade level or higher between 2021 and 2022. So just to orient you, the dotted blue, HISD blue color bar is for 2021. The solid HISD blue color bar is for 2022. And then, the patterned gold bar is the state, and the solid gold bar is the, is the state for 2022. So here, we're looking at gains in every student group for HISD, and we exceeded or matched the state in performance for our African-American, white student populations, economically disadvantaged, and our students who are served through special education services. And I want to pause there because we're going to see a trend in the coming slides of special education being in that exceeded or matched state performance in all of our areas. We did see, when you look at our all students on the far left-hand side of this graph, a larger increase between 21 and 22 than the state did. We saw an increase of 11 percentage points, whereas the state saw an increase of eight. For math, we have the similar patterns in, in the colors of our chart. Again, we saw gains in every student group. We exceeded or matched the state performance in 2022 with our Hispanic and white race ethnicities. Again, students served through special education services and students served through our emergent bilingual EL services. And we were within two percentage points of the state for African-American and economically disadvantaged. For our all students, we saw a gain in mathematics for all grades of 11 percentage points, whereas the state saw an increase of only five. For science, all increased except for the white student population, which already was above the state, but did see a slight decline. We exceeded or matched state performance in 2022, again, for our students served in special education and our white student population. We were within two percentage points for our emergent bilingual population. Again, we saw as a district in science, an increase in our all-student population from 21 to 22 of six percentage points, whereas the state saw half of that increase at three. For social studies, again, MEETS or above, all increased, again, except for white, which was above the state percentage already. We exceeded the state performance in 2022 with our white student population and our students who are served in special education services. And we were within two percentage points for African-American and economically disadvantaged. Again, for social studies, looking at the far left-hand side, HISD saw an increase of two percentage points, whereas the state only saw one. For all subjects combined, all grades, all subjects, all of our student groups went up when you put everything together. Again, we exceeded state performance with our white student population and our students served through special education services. And we were within two percentage points with African-American, Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, and students served in our emergent bilingual English learner program. And following the trend, our all students increased 10 percentage points over the prior year, whereas the state increased seven. So now, we're going to look at a little preview, looking at third-grade ELA, bringing in our House Bill 3, Goal 1, Board Goal 1. We see here that we exceeded or matched state performance, again, with our white student population and our students served through special education services in just third-grade, and we were within two points of the state with our emergent bilingual population. And again, for our all students in third grade, we saw an increase of 14 percentage points, where the state saw an increase of 12. For mathematics, again, just looking at our third-grade students, all increased over the prior year, again, exceeding or matching state performance. We see Hispanic and white student groups, as well as students served in special education. And then, within two percentage points of the state with our African-American students, economically disadvantaged, as well as our emergent bilingual population. And for all students, we saw an increase of 16 percentage points, whereas the state only saw 12. For our graduation and dropout rates, looking at our district performance, for 2021, the four-year graduation rate increased by 1.9 percentage points. It's important to note on this slide, we want to see an increase for graduation rate. And then, we look at our longitudinal dropout rate, we decreased by 1.9 percentage points there. We want to see a decrease there. So we went, although in opposite directions, both in directions that we would want to see. On this graph, it follows the same trend of pattern versus solid for prior year and the current year, as reported in the TAPER report. The bottom part of each of the bar graphs are graduates, and the smaller top percentages are our dropouts. Here, we look at our graduates by type. We are, we have a slightly lower percentage of students on endorsement plans or higher in HISD. And as we dig into our APIB data, we look at our participation rates. Our district participation increased 2.4 percentage points. So we are, we have students experiencing that advanced coursework through AP and IB at higher rates. District participation rate was 10.1 points higher than the state. And our district participation rates increased for all presented student groups there. In looking at the performance, the district percentage of testers that met the criterion, and for AP, it's three or higher, for IB, it's four or higher, decreased 12.9 percentage points. And our rate of performance is 5.8 points lower than the state. These are graphical representations of what we talked about with the student groups. We did see for participation, increases in all student groups, again, denoting that we're continuing to increase access to these higher courses. The state did decrease in all areas except for emergent bilingual. In looking at the exam results for APIB, the district is below the state, except with our Hispanic and our white student populations. And we saw similar rates of decline from 2022, I'm sorry, from 2020 to 2021, except for emergent bilingual in HISD, where we saw a more significant decline. So now, when we look at SAT and ACT performance, our 2021 SAT and ACT annual graduates participation, we decreased our participation rate by 22.9 points, and our rate is two points lower than the state. Our SAT performance increased a half a percentage point, but the district average score is still 4.4 points lower than the state. So as you can see on this graph, our patterned, HISD blue is our 2020 graduates, the solid is the 2021. And you can see that the blue pattern columns versus the gold pattern columns are significantly higher. So prior to the pandemic, HISD had a significantly higher participation rate than the state, but we fell to below state levels in all groups in 2021. So when we look at our results, our results increased, except for with Hispanic, economically disadvantaged, and the state decreased in all areas. We continue to be higher than the state with our Hispanic, white, and economically disadvantaged student groups. In looking at our results for the average test score, you can see here that both HISD and the state saw slight decreases, except for a slight increase with HISD with our white population. So now, moving to college career and military readiness indicators. In 2021, for our college-ready indicators, our percentage of college-ready students was 9.6 points lower than the state, but our district percentage of college-ready students served through special education services is higher than the state. For career and military-ready, and in 2021, military-ready was not measured, but we, the, the TAPER report combines them together. The percentage of career-ready students is 3.6 points higher than the state. And we can see here, we have quite a few student groups that are higher than the state as well. And our combined college career and military-ready students is 5.2 point, percentage points lower than the state. Our African-American student population is higher than the state for, for leaving high school, college, career, military-ready. So when we look here at our college versus career and military-ready, you can see here that our, the solid bar is, is college-ready, HISD blue is HISD, the gold is the state, and then, the patterned is career and military-ready. And for the percent of students ready combined for CCMR, we can see here that HISD decreased between 2020 and 2021, while the state increased, except for students served through special education and emergent bilingual services were both increased. But both, both of those in HISD are at a higher rate than the state. So our students served as emergent bilinguals and served through special education services. Our district performance, enrollment in higher education, it's important to note, this is just in Texas institutions only. So this data does not include students that go, for example, to the University of Oklahoma or to UC Berkeley, or, just as an example. So it does not include students that leave and go outside of our state. So within Texas, our district percent of students enrolling in Texas institutions of higher education the year after they graduated in 2019 decreased by 1.1 percentage points, and the enrollment is 7.3 percentage points lower than the state. For graduating and enrolling in a Texas institution of higher education without remediation, we actually sent more students needing remediation. That percentage decreased 10.6 percentage points. And our enrollment without remediation is 4.5 points higher than the state. So in looking at our HISD and state graduates enrolling in Texas higher education, both HISD and the state decreased. HISD lags behind the state in the school year following high school. So a summary for staff, we see here that Hispanic teachers are underrepresented and African-American and white teachers are overrepresented compared to our student population. I have a graphic to demonstrate that in the next slide. Teaching staff by years of experience, our proportion of teachers with six to 10 years of experience and 21 to 30 increased, whereas our proportion of beginning teachers and teachers with one to five years of experience decreased. Our proportion of teachers with one to five years of experience and more than 30 are higher than the state, whereas our proportion of beginning teachers and teachers with those three spans of, of experience are lower than the state. Our average teacher salary are lower than the state across all years of experience, except for the over 20 years, and they are higher than the state. So when we look at our student population on the left, that is the demographic makeup of HISD students in the 21-22 school year, and teachers is on the right. That is where you can see that African-American teachers are overrepresented and white teachers are overrepresented, whereas Hispanic are under in comparison to our proportion of students. However, HISD continues to be a very diverse teaching population. This is our teaching staff by gender. You can see the trends there. And our HISD staff by category, the vast majority of staff in, in any school district are teachers, that's, those are the bars on the left. HISD has larger percent of auxiliary and professional support staff and lower percent of administration and aides than the state averages. Here, you see the average teaching staff salaries. This is where we see on the far right-hand side, the over 30 years of experience is higher in HISD than the state, but everything else is relatively in line with where the state averages are. Our district summary for class size, although elementary and secondary class sizes are below the state average, our secondary class sizes are still higher than the state. So although elementary and secondary decreased, I'm sorry, in comparison to the year before, secondary is still higher than the state. So in summary, our 2022 accountability rating was a B, retaining that from 2019, even through the pandemic. For 2022, results-driven accountability, where we look at specific populations of students, we are needs assistance at a level two for, for special education and bilingual ESL English learner populations, and needs intervention, level three for other special populations. And that includes our foster, homeless, and military students. Our accreditation status, we did not have accreditation status issued for 21-22 due to COVID-19. And this concludes the annual report public hearing.
Thank you, Dr. Matney. We are now ready for comments or questions from trustees. We will do two rounds of two minutes each. If an additional round is desired, that can be done with a motion second and board vote. And also, please let it be known that Trustee Santos and Trustee Baker have joined us. That is a great question. And for the public, this is our first time using a new system to get in the queue and to vote. So if Brian is here. If you click on your microphone button where it says "my computer," it should switch your screen to the vote cast screen. Okay. I don't see any current speakers in vote cast, so, okay. So. On your microphone, where you click microphone on and off, there's my, my computer button. It's in SharePoint. For round one, we are starting with Trustee Guidry.
Thank you so much, President Hernandez, Superintendent House, and Dr. Matney. Let me just say, and I hope all of my colleagues would agree with me, that overall, this is a good report.
It is.
Overall, this is a good report. Thank you all for all of your hard work, teachers, principals, administration. I do have a couple of questions, though. On pages, I think it was 11, 12. Those 2% that keeps coming up, Dr. Matney, where we have our African-American, you know what I'm talking about, right? Superintendent House, what are we, what do we have in plan to close, continuing to close that gap?
And Dr. Byrd, if you don't mind sharing some of the practices and focus that we're really moving forward with around closing this gap?
Yep. So we continue to, the adoption of high-quality instructional materials will go district-wide next year, so every student in the district will have access to grade-level instruction, which naturally would increase, that along with teacher training would increase student performance. So, you know, that's the biggest thing that we're doing is making sure all students in the district have access to those grade-level materials.
Okay, and so, are you suggesting that all students do not have access, access to it right now?
So, of course, we started off with a pilot, and that pilot is, is expected to, to move forward with a much larger majority of the school district next year. So we are expecting, of course, increased and more results as we move forward with this. Dr. Byrd, you want to share? Was it?
So that's a couple of years ago, or about a year and a half ago, that's when we had a curriculum audit done, and that's why we moved to the adoption of these materials, because all of the materials across the district were not necessarily, you know, we, we didn't have on-grade level materials in every school, and that's in large part due to, you know, schools are, decentralization allows campuses to purchase individual materials. This, that's why we moved to this system of providing HQIM across the, the school district.
So, so are you suggesting that that 2% gap was based on the students who perhaps didn't have?
Well, I mean, not necessarily, the, the curriculum will get, the curriculum product will get you so far, and then it's about teacher training and make sure that we're keeping kids on grade level and the kinds of interventions that we're using. So that's another thing that we're doing, is standardizing the interventions that are available to campuses that we know are research-based and are, have proven to work. So I think, you know, it's a lot of different factors in why that performance would, would, there'd be variability, but that's what we're trying to, that's why we're making this push for standardization of some curriculum across the district, so we can take out the variability as much as possible.
Okay, and that's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, that additional step. The, on page 25, that 9.6% lower than the state, that, now that one, that's kind of high. What are we doing to improve that?
Trustee Guidry, if you could, I don't have the presentation, if you could tell me what, what category?
I don't know. I wrote page 25, 9.6, that's all I have.
It was the district percentage of college-ready students is 9.6% lower than the state. And again, that was 2021 grads.
Okay.
So that would have been during the pandemic.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll wait for round two. Thank you.
Trustee Cruz, thank you for the presentation. Definitely want to recognize, Dr. Matney, you definitely highlighted that. I mean, when I looked at every single metric, special education definitely outshines, and that is amazing. I know it's a testament to all of the hard work that the staff has been doing with not just our conservators, I know we had other partners like Sped Strategies. I mean, it's one thing to come in with a report and say, this is what you need to do, but you're actually implementing it. And I know that that has been a huge focal point and a priority for the board through goals and a constraint as well. And so, just want to recognize, I mean, that is no small feat, and I hope that we continue to see that, that upward trajectory. So a couple of questions. Let's start on page 18. So APIB, I'm excited to see that the, the participation rate increased, but the testers meeting the criterion actually decreased. Now, is that because more kids were, were taking the class? Like, help me understand.
So that's part of it, when the, you know, the, more students that take the test, then you're going to have different results there in that bottom performance. But also, one of the things that we've done this year, starting this year, is to increase pre-AP classes to prepare kids for those AP courses in their higher grades. So there's, and, and we've also sent all of our teachers to training at Rice Institute, so that we know that teachers have the foundation to be able to teach those classes, because we did notice that while students make As and Bs in the course, that it does not necessarily correlate to a 3, 4, or 5 on the exam. So we knew there was a problem, so we have put some things in place to fix that and that related to teacher training and also access to materials that we know are adopted by the college board.
And when does that access to pre-APs start? What grade?
So actually, and it's in our high schools, ninth grade mostly, but there are even some middle school course offerings. And then, we also have Avid. We had the largest expansion for Avid, so that will also build the structure, the infrastructure for kids that, for schools that have historically not had advanced placement coursework. This is just another tool to give those kids access to those classes in later years.
And help me remember, did Avid start this year, at least in terms of expansion?
Expansion was this year. For all, actually, the, all the things I just talked about all happened this school year.
Okay, so we really won't see the, the results of that until the next class, probably, which, then it's always a delay. Okay. So my next question is on slide 21. The decrease in SAT, the rate decreased. I know some of this has to do with the pandemic. What are the other factors that contributed to that?
I think in addition to the pandemic, there are, you know, there has been a movement for the last several years around schools that don't require test, testing to go to their universities, so that could have, could have contributed to it. But I think probably more the pandemic than anything else.
And class of 21, help me remember if there was an SAT school day and what was the participation? Because I'm just wondering, like, even though it's test optional for a lot of college applications, what was still that?
So SAT school day for class of 21, if I recall correctly, was going to be happening right after we closed to go for the pandemic. But then, that next fall, we increased an opportu, we added an opportunity for them that fall, but by that point, to Dr. Byrd's point, they had, colleges had announced they were going test optional at that point.
Okay, so let me, sorry, now I'm out of time, I just need clarity on this. So the 21, 22, if we're looking at 21 annual graduates, but the pandemic started in 2020, so this is a year later, right? Kids are back in school, we weren't shut down fully, right?
But not everybody came back to, but not everybody came back to school.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same group of students. Okay, thank you, sorry for the extra time.
Trustee Diggard?
My first question is, are our children achieving to the level that you aspire for them to achieve?
I think we're progressing. We definitely are not where we want to be, but I think we are progressing, and I think the overall presentation speaks to that. But what's going to be important is that we continue to monitor, to continue to assess, so that we can... is that we continue to monitor, to continue to assess, uh, so that we can see the strides towards the, uh, additional progress that we know is going to be important for our students.
What are your areas of greatest concern?
I think some of them were, were mentioned in the, in the presentation, as we look at, of course, the, uh, percentage of, of, of students that, uh, participated, I think we were looking at, you know, twenty-two point nine in terms of ACT, SAT. Uh, we know that, uh, the, the number in terms of remediation of students, uh, as they leave us, which is kind of the, uh, the pinnacle of what, where we want to focus. We want to make sure that remediation is, is, is not a, uh, a focal point for many of our students when they leave, uh, leave our, um, uh, leave our, our schools, especially our high schools. Uh, so those are a couple of, uh, the areas that we definitely want to see improvement in, uh, but, uh, there are others that, uh, we, uh, be glad to, uh, to share. Dr. Matney, any, any other thing that jumps out completely, uh, for you as well?
I think the other is, uh, what Trustee Guidry brought up, just to continue, um, needing to focus on raising up the bar for all student populations, um, making sure that they're all achieving is, is one that, that stands out in this presentation as well.
So the, the district has the four district goals that are down here, does the adminis- yeah, but there are obviously a lot of other areas, right, that are measured in this. Does the administration have targets for any of these other areas in addition to the four regularly monitored district goals?
Dr. Matney?
Like specifically around the staff piece and, are you talking the academic piece?
So we do, we definitely have goals around, uh, advanced.
Actually, I will add to that more specific, let's start with student achievement.
On, uh, advanced placement and IB, we do have, uh, goals for both participation and achievement, we have, um, played, put metrics in place to see increases. With that, that's correlated to the investments that the school district is making and, uh, improving those programs. And then we also, uh, based on, uh, implementation of, uh, Eureka, Carnegie, and Amplify, we have both, uh, uh, implementation, uh, metrics as well as achievement metrics that we should see increases in student achievement across all, uh, student groups, uh, and that's a kind of, that's in the research that as school districts implement those products, they do see increases in those.
So let me dive into that a little deeper, so for example, um, slide eight, you know, this isn't just third grade reading, this is all reading.
Sure.
Um, does the, at the administrative level, and I'm not saying that they, there should or shouldn't be, I'm asking if there are, administrative level goals, targets for the different groups in the different grade levels?
Yes.
Of like what you're trying to achieve?
Yes, so at every, not just third, I mean, this is third grade because it's the state report, but we have every grade level, and we want to see increases, there's, there's percentage increases in every grade level based upon current performance and then, uh, project.
Are you setting a target, like, we want to incre-
Yes, we are.
Like, it's not just we want to increase.
No, it's, uh, there's targets, yeah.
That's, that's what I was trying to get, I appreciate that, thank you. So how are you measuring the success, therefore, of, in, in all of these other areas? Is it, I guess, in just this way, of each grade level, each?
So we have, right, so we have, uh, kind of, uh, progress monitoring along the way through our interim assessments and through, uh, and then for implementation, we are actually going into schools, observing what's happening and, and, um, getting data, collecting data around the effectiveness of implementation, which also helps us change our training, um, practices, um, based upon what we're learning. So it's, it's really, it's informing PD, and it's also, uh, helping us monitor the use of our, the, the effectiveness of our investments. So for example, in AP classes, um, you know, we're going to be monitoring master schedules and, uh, how many students are, more students are participating, how many more students are being successful at the end of the year, to see if those, those interventions we have placed, such as, you know, sending teachers to training, uh, purchasing curriculum, if those are working, and, so, yeah, we have, we have, uh, different kinds of progress checks along the way.
I'll, I'll add, our strategic plan metrics are the leading indicators
Yeah.
that build up to the board goals and these, um, macro indicators that the state is highlighting here, so each of us have a board goal commitment, and the leading indicators within that strategic plan lever are the ones that contribute to the, to these metrics that you're seeing here. So I'll say, as it relates to, uh, I'll just say my strategic plan lever, each person can comment specifically on his or her, uh, different lever, I look at attendance and behavior, because those are leading indicators, you have to first get kids in school and to school and ready to learn in order to achieve the results that you see on the screen, so that would just be one example. Thank you, appreciate that. So this is final data, prelim data we had last summer, are there any big differences between the prelim data and the final data?
Dr. Matney?
Not significant. In fact, the, the, as far as the board goals piece, our calculations were exact with what we received with TAPER.
So theoretically, we could shift and actually monitor these things before the school year starts, in the previous summer, closer to when we get this data at a more effective time?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, on page fifteen, are there any campuses where the graduation rate decreased, and then, or maybe I'm getting my question backwards, where, where the, the trend on an individual campus was inverse of what the district data is?
I don't have that in front of me, so I don't want to speak definitively, but, um, but I do believe so, but I don't have that in front of me.
Oh, I'm waiting for my turn, thanks.
Trustee Wade?
Thank you. Um, all right, Superintendent House, so when, if we look at twen- uh, eighteen, please? All right, so, um, how are we planning to align our budget to bolster better outcomes in performance?
So part of our, our budget process that, uh, we've gone through, and I think we've had a chance to, uh, to connect with, uh, each of you, uh, in, in small groups to, to talk about exactly, uh, where some of the reductions, uh, are, we've studied not only what we felt has, has made a major difference, uh, so that we can continue funding those items, uh, but we've also studied, uh, what might not have yielded, um, the, the kind of results, uh, that, that we want to see. Of course, Dr. Matney's office has been very helpful in taking a look at, uh, some of the programs and, uh, and, and different things that we're utilizing from school to school, uh, so we've taken all of that data into account, uh, to ensure that, uh, we spend where effects, uh, are, are positive.
Okay, so how will that affect, say, contracts that we already have in play on some of these areas? I know you can't give me that exact answer, but, uh, it's something that I guess you are considering.
Planning standpoint, um, we are at that stage, uh, of the school year where we're, um, wrapping up, uh, what budgets will look like eventually from site to site, uh, so sites will have the ability to have informed, uh, data to, uh, to ensure that they're spending on the right things. As an administration, we'll have, you know, data and insight to ensure that, uh, we're, we're spending on things that we feel are, are really making a difference in accordance to the data.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, uh, I'd like to go to page twenty-five, please. So, twenty-five, I see that our college-ready, uh, okay, yeah, uh, college-ready, we are nine point six percent lower than the state, and so, um, I know we've already discussed a lot of this, but my question is, besides our, I know you, you discussed the pie chart, the, the situations that we have different than the state, uh, you know, and we, we saw the graphs that show those, those, uh, breakouts. So what are we going to do, um, holistically, uh, to focus in on that particular nugget? If that?
Dr. Byrd? So I thi- so in, in terms of CCMR, we are doing, we have already begun doing things, uh, looking at our pathways, making sure that we have complete pathways, because as the accountability framework changes, so too do the requirements that we will require students to take more classes to complete, like a CTE strand, for example, we are, uh, looking at different ways that students can meet, um, the TSI requirement, Texas Success Initiative requirement. So there are different things that we're putting in place to make sure that, uh, we're giving kids the multiple opportunities to meet the requirements of the CCMR.
I say CCMR, but I'm just thinking about the college-ready part of it.
So, yeah, so TSI is the-
We're just looking at the whole.
We're, yes, we're, we're, yeah.
Fair enough, thank you. All right, moving on to twenty-eight, please? So we've losing, based on what I'm seeing, we're losing, maybe we're losing track of students? Is, would you say that's maybe the case after they are leaving, more than necessarily they're going to colleges outside of the state?
It's really a combination, so, but this data right ha- right here is, it's not, um, inclusive of all students that graduate with us, it's students who graduate who then go on to a Texas institution.
Right, so we're just saying, okay, fair enough, okay, thank you for clarifying that, and then I think I had one more question. All right, thank you.
Trustee Bluefer Daniels?
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. It seems like you tried to prepare it and answer our questions before we actually asked them, so thank you for that effort anyway, and, but I'd like to ask, um, did I miss something? Because we don't have a breakout, this is an overall, um, achievement for the district, so we don't have a breakout that shows ele- elementary compared to middle school, to pair, compared to high school with some of these achievements, to be able to identify the gaps?
That's correct, so the, um, state produces the TAPER report as a whole district and then by individual campuses, so already published on the research and accountability website are links to all of those, so you can see by individual campus, but they don't break it out in the way that you're describing.
And, and thank you for that, because I'd like to see jointly, collectively, elementary school, middle school, and high school, because I'm always having this concern, just like there's a, a graph for, it talks about the nine through twelve dropout percentage. With that, then I want to be able to see that at middle school level, what that dropout percentage is, because people tend not to concentrate on the fact that we have ninth, eighth and ninth grade dropouts, and so I think that if we had that identified, that would, it probably would be able to absorb it more. But on pa- page twenty-five, uh, I'm going back to, to Trustee Guidry's point, that nine point six percent lower than the state on page twenty-five. Are we back up there, okay, that nine, and then at the bottom, the CCMR for twenty-twenty-one shows the five point two percent, so how did you get to the five point two percent with the career military ready at three point six? I think that's six.
So the, the bottom, the five point two, is all of the CCMR indicators, all of the college career military indicators, so the college-ready is nine point six lower, but the career in military is higher, so what that, it works out to the five point two lower.
Okay, that's, and that's what I wanted to make sure, that was sort of an average of, of the two, okay. I just want to be, be clear on that, and, um, so that nine point six percent, is there a matrix to, to determine, since this is twenty-twenty-one's data, is there a metric to, to determine currently where we are in comparison, like this middle of the year, for instance, um, uh, tracking module or something to show where we are right now in comparison to where we were last year?
We do, we have, um, an internal CCMR tracker that, uh, all the data points that feed into college career military readiness indicator feed into that, and so campus principals and leadership teams, um, go in and they, they work on that, and so we deploy out to campuses and have conversations around that, so that they can see, um, where they have students on track versus not on track, um, to meet those indicators, so we're, we're constantly monitoring that.
And I appreciate that, but how difficult would it be to have the research team collectively show the high school versus middle school versus elementary? To have that data for the district, as opposed to going in and looking at the individual schools?
We can definitely look into doing that.
Thank you.
Trustee Baker?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Matney, thank you Superintendent House, I'd just like to say that, thank you for such a thorough report, uh, I saw it at home, and it was thorough, and the questions and answers were thorough, so all of my questions have been answered already, so thank you.
Trustee Santos?
Thank you, President Hernandez, Superintendent House, Dr. Matney, for the presentation. So, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two district summary of class sizes, page thirty-five. The average class size, elementary average class size decreased for grades one through six, was this strategic, was this because we had, uh, the increase in teacher pay? Can, what, what, what can we attribute this to, Dr. Matney? Or Superintendent House?
Dr. Matney?
Um, so these can fluctuate up and down, um, but I would definitely say that the, that putting the efforts around the, um, ESER funds and deploying those out to campuses to allow them to hire, whether it's a class size reduction teacher, um, to ensure that our supports are around our students as we, um, exit the pandemic.
Okay, and so this is, you're saying, uh, grades K through six class size below the state average, so we increased the number of teachers that we had, which meant that we decreased the class sizes from the previous year, wh- what are we comparing this to?
That is correct, so when we look at our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two average class sizes, they were smaller in grades K through six than they were in year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one.
And what my, what I might add as well, and Mr. Grant Skitter may have a, uh, specific number, but I know this school year, we hired, um, how many more teachers than we did the previous school year? If you remember, I know we talked about it at one point, uh, one-on-one, but I don't remember the number, uh, but that correlates with, with what you're saying, uh, Trustee Santos, in terms of the number of teachers that could potentially bring down the class as there were more teachers, uh, in the district, uh, in comparison to what we had in the previous year.
Right, and so that brings me to my next point, I know that HISD outperformed the state, um, I know, sorry, Dr. Matney, I missed that portion, but I kind of, um, went over it for page eight, HISC and state start LA, LA, LA reading percentage meets, percentage and meets or above, um, but we did outperform the state in, um, our special education students, students with disabilities, can, is this attributed to the increase in, in teachers and decrease in class sizes, what are we doing different that caused this increase?
I think it's a combination of different things, we know that it's, it's been a focal area, uh, that, that has been focused on, uh, so on, on top of, uh, teacher, we're talking about teacher training, compliance, all the different things that we know that are important in, in the arts process, uh, it really, um, speaks to the culmination, uh, culmination of different, um, positive results here, so I don't think it's one particular thing, I think it's the, it's the initial attention in the strategic plan around what this looks like, and the execution of ensuring that, uh, you know, we work on it and get better over the course of time.
Right, and I just want to point out that we did outperform the state in reading, math, science, social studies, all subjects with our, our students with disabilities, and I just want to give a huge shout out to that, I know we've been, we, being part of the Special Ed Ed-Huck Committee my first year on the board and moving forward, that's my passion, I know we have to get that right for our kids, so thank you so much for that, Superintendent House.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions, thank you, Dr. Matney, for your presentation, excited to see the upward trajectory of the, of the district, um, my first question is on page, uh, seven, so we see that there's an increase of eleven points in reading, eleven points in math, is this from one year to the next?
Yes, that's correct.
That is awesome to see, and I'm very excited for the next set of board goals, and trying to create those, um, create those, uh, board goals, for sure. My second question is referring back to one of the questions that Trustee, um, Diggard asked, in reference to something that we've been talking about for a long time, um, so from my understanding, we've, haven't been able to break down, break out the, um, Hispanic students into English testers and Spanish testers, I, I don't necessarily understand the full reason, but from what you were telling Trustee Diggard earlier, is that something that we are able to do now because of this, what you explained to her?
Yes, if the board changes the data source for your goals from TAPER to our internal reporting, once we get all of the files that they use for TAPER, we operate much quicker, because we have fewer campuses and, and students, and so absolutely, we can, we can, um, look at data, um, in a much more nuanced way and not be tethered to how TAPER reports it.
Okay, that's what I understood, and I, that's why I wanted to double check on that. And then on page six, we see a very, um, a different, um, percentage of students, uh, with special, in a special education in, uh, HISD than in Texas, can you speak a little bit more to that, to root causes, or what HISD is doing, um, in terms of that?
Dr. Byrd? Dr. Burt. So that is one of the things that we're looking at as we are looking at our special education services and the processes that we are using to identify students, we are continuing to improve our process of of making sure we're compliant with all of the requirements and I I think I don't I can't speak to why the number is it's different between the state and HISC, but I do know that that's an area that we're paying attention to, to make sure that we're properly identifying everyone that needs those services.
Okay, thank you, and on page 30, we have the salary of teachers versus the state, I'm guessing that this this data is old and that for this year it's going to look different, right? I'm hoping, do we have the updated data on that, just?
I don't know that we have it readily available to us at this moment, but you are correct in your assumption in terms of this being old data and that it definitely should look different, knowing that just in the region alone, we were 15th or 16th in the region in terms of first year teacher pay alone and, you know, with the modifications in the compensation plan, we've moved to, I think, second in the region, so that we definitely should see a shift in the right direction here. I'm just speaking in the region, we were about 15th or 16th in the region in pay prior to the compensation adjustment that was approved by the board, once that adjustment was made for first year teachers, we moved to, I believe, about second in the region in terms of first year pay, so that'll be a driver and a lever in terms of what this data looks like.
Then my last question is on page 28, I know that I asked this last year about students who leave Texas for college, I was told that we're going to start tracking that, there's some system, can you just give us an update?
Dr. Mattney.
We do have that, in fact, we report on that and it's on our research and accountability website, it's called National Student Clearinghouse and that organization tracks students who leave and go to about 99% of institutions across the country and so we we upload files about three times a year for them to look at both formatively and then summatively as graduation classes finish their first semester and first year, second year, third year and post-secondary institutions, so we do, it's just TAPER doesn't report that data yet.
Thank you, we're going on to round two and just for time's sake, it is 4:56, so trustee Cruz, round two.
Okay, I'll try to be fast, I'll just submit most of my questions as a referral. Question on slide 22, because looking, it says annual graduates 2020 and 2021, so it's lumped together, is that correct for this data?
It is not lumped together, so the pattern bars are 2020 and the solid bars are 21.
So when looking at this data and we're going down and I'm thinking back, the class of 2020 helped me remember if there was an SAT school day because we shut down, you know, second week of March, as the whole world did, so if more students in 2020 were actually taking the SAT and now we've decreased, help me understand if I'm reading that correctly, I'm a little concerned.
So class of 2020, I can speak very intimately about, I have one of those children and their SAT school day was before spring of 2020, so they had to have that all completed before applications in the fall and all that, so they that bar right there, the 91.7 reflects them participating in school day, SAT before institutions said test optional and before we were navigating the pandemic.
So why is the SAT school day late, isn't it in March or April this year? Is there a fall and a spring date, maybe I missed the fall one?
Yes, the the spring date is for juniors the year before, so class of 2020 took their SAT spring of 2019.
Okay, that's very helpful, okay, makes a little more sense, I'll just ask one more question on slide 25, so looking at the bottom section, our African-American students are higher than the state, which is commendable and amazing, I'm curious, is there a a specific criteria or area that they are meeting that metric with more than others?
I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, and I'll I'll submit the rest of my questions, thank you.
Trustee Blueford Daniels.
Just real quickly, it was a follow-up to my initial questions, I just ran out of time, it was mentioned about high quality instructional material and I'm always thinking that high quality, we need to say high quality, that it becomes subjective and, you know, with nothing to really gauge that with, and it was mentioned about standardized standardization, so are we talking about with Eureka, Carnegie and Amplify, all three of those programs? Okay, and so with those three with those three programs, because all all the students are not being learning by the same program, it's right across right now, this year?
They are not, but we have matched our scope and sequence, the students that are still using district curriculum, we matched the scope and sequence to match to mirror Carnegie and Eureka, so the teachers are covering the same topics at the same time, they're using different materials, but and to your earlier point of what does high quality mean, it actually is defined by does the curriculum product meet all of the cover all of the TEACs, all of the standards for the that the state expects and does it provide opportunities for teachers to have regular formative assessment and does it provide support for English learners, students with disabilities, et cetera, so that's what the term high quality actually does the definition that we go by.
That makes sense, thank you for that, I appreciate that, so I'll have to look that up, make sure I have that registered, thank you, Dr. Burt.
You're welcome.
So then one of those, all the all three of those programs, as mentioned, then, the standardized high quality instructional material, it's going to we're going to resort to one or the other as opposed to utilizing all three like we're doing now?
So it will be elementary will have Eureka, secondary will have Carnegie and then Amplify is a K8 product for reading.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Diggard.
Thank you, so my first question is reflecting back on Superintendent House, you mentioned that one of your greatest areas of concern was, sorry, I'm lost my notes, was our high school kettos, so part of yours your fiscal transformation plan is reducing the per pupil allocation to high schools through by cutting the high school allotment and then also to trustee Wade's question about, you know, finding things that aren't working in that same context, so I'm having trouble reconciling, like this is an area of greatest concern, but a core thing in the fiscal transformation plan that you're bringing to us for this year is cutting the funding to high school, so help me understand that because I think I'm missing something.
And we'd be glad to dig deeper into budget and fiscal transformation during our next workshop, but what I will say is that the preparation doesn't necessarily start just in high school or the remediation shouldn't just be in high school, it should really be across the board, my hope is that as we have more successful students at the elementary level, we'll have more successful students at the middle school level, we want to have those students that are at the middle school level prepared at the high school level to ensure that we have a smaller percentage of students that are being remediated at the college level, so while we are making cuts across the board in different areas to ensure that our deficit is a is a deficit that doesn't stand or is not kicked down the the road as it has been for for several years, we will we will make certain that that we look at where we yield some of the best results across the board, it's not just at the high school level.
So what are you cutting then, or well, I guess save those, then I look forward to that that key question, if this is an area of greatest concern, but this is the area where we're making the most cuts, I would will look forward to hearing more about that, so then my next question is following up on trustee Blueford Daniels' question about high quality instructional materials, what strategies are you employing to increase high quality instructional time, especially for our students who are identified as struggling the most by this report?
Dr. Burt. Well, so actually, now is the time that we are looking, principals are looking at their master schedules and now that we've had a year of implementation, we do know some lessons learned and so the school's office is working with our team, academic team, to work with principals to make sure they're giving allotting enough time for the instructional materials that are, you know, to make sure that we're able to cover everything we need to, that's the biggest lever that we have is looking at our how we're spending our class time and then also how make sure we're giving teachers enough time to prepare to adequately teach, you know, these new curriculum products, so through PLCs, professional learning community meetings, et cetera.
Are there inequities across the district in the quality of instructional time between our highest performing and lowest performing students?
I would say that there, yes, there's a there are a variety of schedules currently being employed and we are looking at best practices, our assistant superintendents have a meeting with schools and I'll let Dr. Watts elaborate further on that, but I know that they're working to they're working they're working closely with academics to make sure that everybody's getting equitable time.
But that includes not just the schedule, I'm also trying to understand, like, what we're doing, you know, when I see a school where the teacher attendance rate's only 91% and they have a high, so pack all that into an answer, I'd really love to hear it, thank you.
As you are highlighting, there are lots of different variables, so I would say there is a great variance across our schools in how instructional time is being used, at the high school level in the upcoming school year, we are trying to get principals to agree upon one or two master schedule templates that would be more effective as it relates to ensuring that there's adequate time for planning, adequate time for teachers to get tier one instruction taught, adequate time for interventions and we're beginning to move that in that direction for other levels of learning also, I will say teacher attendance is not a place where we have really dug in for that because there are a myriad of reasons why teachers may be out, but that is certainly something we could we could begin to look at.
In my class of a key core content area and they don't get professional development, they're paid less than Chick-fil-A, right?
Yes.
You know, concerns like that, that's they're obvious challenges, but how are we overcoming?
And I think that's how other board goals and constraints feed into this conversation, we obviously have a restraint a constraint around teacher retention and recruitment, which is exactly what you're talking at talking about, the having subs, so all of these things work together in synergy to produce the the quality time that we all desire.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I don't see anybody else in the queue, we will now vote to accept the Texas Academic Performance Report.
Dr. Baker.
We have a motion by trustee Baker and a second by trustee Santos, please vote. Motion passes, we have nine in favor. Mr. House, do you have any further comments?
I would like to take a moment to address the information that has been really making its way around this week regarding the potential intervention of the Texas Education Agency. As of today, the district has not received an official notice from TEA, I remain laser-focused on fulfilling my duties as superintendent alongside our Board of Trustees to provide the best possible educational outcomes for all HISD students regardless, my my team and I will continue to implement our community-informed strategic plan, which is delivering results, as you heard today in reference to the TAPER data, to ensure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing for HISD students and families, the district will provide an update for our students, families and community as soon as we receive official information from TEA, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, the board will now adjourn to closed session under chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act subsection 551.004, 551.071, 551.072, 551.073, 551.074, 551.076, 551.082, 551.0821, 551.0823, 551.084 and 551.089. Should the board's final action vote or decision on any matter considered in closed session be required, such final action vote or decision shall be taken at the open meeting covered by this notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof, the board has adjourned to closed session at 5:07 PM.
...
Get Xfinity Internet for just $25 a month with no annual contract during our limited time launch celebration. time launch celebration.
You have no idea how good you've got it.
What a time to be alive.
Introducing the next generation 10G network, only from Xfinity.
When we switched, we saved over $450 with AAA auto insurance.
When I switched, I was able to save over $450 with AAA insurance a year, so that was pretty spectacular and, you know, right then and there I signed on the dotted line.
Switch to insurance through AAA Texas today and you could save an average of $483 on auto insurance. Compare that to State Farm, Geico, even Allstate. Call now for your free AAA full picture quote to find out how much you could save.
Those savings are absolutely passed on to my other passions, so being able to support my art habit, buying art supplies is phenomenal.
The money we've been able to save from our AAA insurance, we're able to put that money back into our food truck and our flavors and put it back into our business.
There's nothing more American than barbecue in AAA.
To find out how much you could save by switching to insurance through AAA Texas, call 888-408-8413 for your free...
Economic discrimination, racial prejudice, and ultimately hate crimes.
That's right, they are all unintended consequences predicted by opponents of a proposed state law that's supposed to protect us. Fox 26 political reporter Greg Grugan joining us from the newsroom to explain. Greg?
Yeah, Caroline and Rashi, two proposals before the Texas legislature are designed to keep land in our state out of the hands of our enemies. Trouble is, they also block property ownership by literally tens of thousands of our most loyal and productive future citizens. Beneath the Capitol dome in Austin, outrage over a proposal banning future land sales in Texas to non-citizens originating from four nations deemed hostile to the United States, Iran, Russia, North Korea, and China. Seventeen years into his quest for naturalization, Professor Wei Li called the bills a heartbreaking betrayal of his love for the Lone Star State.
But deep down, I know I'm already a Texan long while ago. I can cook perfect moist brisket. I even understand how to use Flash Your Heart properly. But SB 147 and SB 711 are a slap on my face. It scoffs at me. Sorry, you're not Texan. People like you will not even deserve to own a home. I'm raising four young Texans proudly. SB 147 and SB 711 also a slap on my children's faces. They're proud to be American because they live in America. No one can treat you differently because of the color of your skin or because of where you were born.
Promoted as a restriction aimed at preserving national security, scores of opponents called the proposed legislation clear-cut discrimination, certain to escalate anti-immigrant sentiment, and ultimately violence against the innocent.
This will create Asian hate if SB 147 bill is passed. Texas ranks fourth in anti-Asian incidents. If this bill passes, there will be more hate crimes and incidents against Asian grandmas and grandpas, and their blood would be on your hands.
If this bill comes as a law, become a law, it will put all people who looks like me, any Asians, into a third-class citizenship.
To make any specific immigrant group less equal than everybody else is not America.
Please choose the path that protects all communities and does not single out ours.
And there are likely other unintended consequences if this measure becomes law, as in discouraging serious foreign investment and crippling the ability of Texas businesses and universities to recruit potential employees subject to the ban on buying property here. In the newsroom, Greg Grugan, Fox 26 News.
All right, Brooks and Dunn's return to rodeo Houston is one for the books. More than 72,000 people packed NRG to listen to the legendary country duo. Tonight Lauren Daigle hits the star stage, and the good thing is the concert apparently will be going on no matter what the weather is. It's the rides.
Yes, it is the rides, it is a concern. Weather's a concern right now, sky's not looking too good out there.
That's right, if the wind becomes greater than 35 miles per hour, I believe they will have to shut down the rides unfortunately, but hopefully we can keep the severe threat low, but it is a threat. So I do want to talk about what we're expecting because we do have that line of storms that will be pushing through. Right now it's the calm before the storm, live view of Houston, and we've got the thick clouds out there. It has been windy all day, that strong wind out of the south, those temperatures once again today near 80 degrees, still at 76 degrees, and we've had some occasional light rain and drizzle, but nothing severe just yet. But check out some of these wind gusts, wind gusting close to 30 miles per hour already for much of Houston, Pearland, 35 mile per hour gusts down around Engleton, so it is already very windy even outside of the strong storms we're expecting to roll through this evening. So what do you need to do? Make sure that you secure, bring in any light or loose objects in your yard, you don't want those getting blown around. Plan for possible power outages if we do get some of those storms to turn severe, and make sure you have multiple sources for those alerts. Of course, one great source, the Fox 26 Weather App, make sure you have that on your phone before you head out to the rodeo or other events this evening and tonight. Make sure to review that severe weather plan as well. Here is the timing, I'm expecting a line of storms between 7:00 PM and 11:00 PM tonight. Damaging wind, isolated tornadoes, hail and heavy rain will all be possible. The highest risk will be north of Houston, up towards Huntsville, Livingston, but even in the Houston area, we are still in that category two out of five threat for severe storms. Right now, nothing severe showing up on our Fox Red radar, just some scattered light rain between Houston, the Woodlands, getting close to Livingston and Liberty, but overall it's not going to be until about eight, nine o'clock before that threat for storms starts to go up for the Houston area. So 9:00 PM, storms over towards Sealy, getting very close to western Harris County, pushing right over downtown Houston by 10:00 PM with some heavy rain that could impact rodeo events out there. Of course, we've got Lauren Daigle out there performing tonight. Galveston, you're likely getting in on some of that heavy rain around 10 to 11:00 PM, and then that system quickly races off to the east, bringing us some cooler and drier air. But if you are going to be out at the rodeo tonight, plan on some storms, make sure to have the umbrella and make sure to have a way to get those alerts because between 8:00 PM and 11:00 PM, it will be quite stormy. Behind the system though, very gorgeous weekend, lower humidity, pleasant for the weekend, cooler, highs in the 70s, but back to the 80s by next week.
I know you're wondering, the battle over the best eggs. Next, we compare the farm-fresh eggs that our rented chickens have laid with the eggs from the store. Our rented chickens have laid with the eggs from the store.
This new segment is brought to you by Leveled Concrete. At AAA Texas, saving money means as much to us as it does to our members. Nikki saved her family over $450 by switching to AAA auto insurance. Mary Ann switched and saved 350, and Phillip saved over 400. Now is a good time to review your auto insurance policy. AAA is here to help you with your auto, home, and life insurance needs. It's easy. Call 877-885-9602 for your free AAA full picture quote today. You'll be glad you did.
An open floor plan to watch us play? A soaking tub to get away? A porch, a deck, siding in blue? So many options, not just a few. Pantries, closets, storage galore, energy savings, and so much more. When you go out, you'll wish you stayed. With our homes, you can have it made. New homes available, starting under $69.9.
Right before Mike decided to say yes, he learned he had IVSC and could treat it with Linzess. It explained why his constipation with belly pain wouldn't go away, and why the belly pain, discomfort, and bloating couldn't be kept at bay. After Mike learned his symptoms were signs of a chronic condition, his doctor helped him make a decision, and that's why he said yes to adding Linzess. Linzess is not a laxative, it helps you have more frequent and complete bowel movements, and is proven to help relieve overall abdominal symptoms, belly pain, discomfort, and bloating. Do not give Linzess to children less than two, it may harm them. Do not take Linzess if you have a bowel blockage. Get immediate help if you develop unusual or severe stomach pain, especially with bloodier black stools. The most common side effect is diarrhea, sometimes severe. If it's severe, stop taking Linzess and call your doctor right away. Other side effects include gas, stomach area pain, and swelling. Could your story also be about IVSC? Talk to your doctor and say yes to Linzess. Learn how AbV and Ironwood could help you save on Linzess.
To all the Chevy Silverado owners out there, the adventurers and the doers, thank you for making Chevy Silverado the number one best-selling retail full-size pickup. It's Chevy truck season, get 0% financing plus make no monthly payments for 90 days on all Silverado 1500 pickups, and get $1,000 cash allowance on this Silverado with a turbo high-output engine. Chevy drives Texas, find new roads.
Fox 26, one unstoppable lineup.
Welcome to Wake Up, we start with breaking news this morning. Tonight in our ongoing series, The Missing, I'll be...
Only on Fox tonight, Harris County, Texas.
Ooh, that's strong, honey, do we even call Uber?
You know, when we're in the present, 180, on just one station, Fox 26.
Watching Your Money, we are looking to see how much money we can save on eggs by renting chickens. This is so cool, this is exclusive to Fox 26. Barbara and Carol from Rent the Chicken laid a dozen eggs in the first week.
Wow, that's exciting. Consumer reporter Heather Sullivan and Fox 26 photojournalist Chandler Watson crack some open to see the difference between farm-fresh eggs and store-bought.
Good morning, all about to whip up some eggs this morning. Here you can see are the ones we got from Rent the Chicken. They are much darker than what I'm used to seeing. Here are your store-bought eggs, the regular white pigmentation that we're used to seeing, and here are the ones that Homestead Dad's gave to us. Let's take a look inside. You can see, it looks normal right now, but wait till we crack open this store-bought egg. Look how much darker that Homestead Barb and Carol egg is than the store-bought. Store-bought, here we go with Barb and Carol eggs. Just look at that. Here are the store-bought eggs, yummy. And here are the Barb and Carol eggs, yummy, yummy.
So now the big reveal, did you notice a difference in the way that they tasted?
Yeah, Heather, the best thing I could compare it to is you getting a home-cooked meal, or rather than you going out to eat and getting something to eat. You can definitely taste the love in these.
The love from Barbara and Carol.
Yes.
Now you know. With Chandler Watson, I'm Heather Sullivan for Fox 26 News. You know, seeing the color be so dark and brown in the ones that were naturally laid versus the white eggs makes me wonder, why are the eggs white in the store?
Yes, and what kind of process do they go through? I mean, this is really eye-opening, we could do a whole segment on this, but it is, I would like to try the difference as well. I mean, if there's such a big difference.
I think we need to get these eggs to the anchor desk, I'm, I'm pretty invested now after that one.
We need to get Barbara and Carol here.
Oh, that would be for a live interview, I agree. Next on Fox 26 News at five, the state has more than $90 million in rent relief available? Find out when you can apply. And we examine the gender pay gap. Have things improved for women over the past 20 years? Have things improved for women over the past 20 years?
At Kroger, we want our fresh produce to meet your expectations, which is why we do up to a 27-point inspection to check for things like color and scarring, because when it comes to fresh, higher standards mean fresher produce. Kroger, fresh for everyone.
At Take Five, you stay in your car because we're faster than you think.
Oil change is done. That was so fast, I didn't even have time to finish knitting these sweaters. Oh, well.
Cheese! Take Five, the stay in your car 10-minute oil change.
This is Ford Truck Month, Texas. Time to get up and get into Ford F-150, part of F-Series, America's best-selling trucks for 46 years straight. All amped up and ready for work or play. Plus, there's a great selection in stock and ready for delivery today. So get into Ford Truck Month, Texas, and see what a built Ford tough truck can do for you. Drive a new Ford F-150 today with 0% zero down and zero payments for 90 days plus complimentary maintenance. See your best in Texas Ford dealer.
We believe in possibilities at Texas Children's. As the nation's largest women's and pediatric healthcare system, we believe that all lives can be changed for the better. For every cure found, we're dedicated to finding another. For every life changed, we're determined it isn't the last one. By doing things differently, we deliver the impossible for the benefit of the world. Texas Children's, the difference is life-changing.
Rooms-to-go anniversary sale starts Saturday, and we're turning up the savings to a whole new level. With amazing sale prices on the hottest pieces and coolest packages store-wide. Now who doesn't like the sound of that? Whether you shop online or in-store, make your move this month and celebrate in style. The Rooms-to-Go Anniversary Sale starts this Saturday.
The Flexor Credits electricity plan spices things up a little. The two-high-shoe stays are free every week, and you get three bill credits to cash in during your plan. There's living, and then there's living Flexor. Reliant, that's how you're way.
When your door is always open, so is the fridge. At Kroger, however you shop, in-store, pickup, or delivery, you get the same great prices, deals...
Some drama starting out the day in the double murder trial of Alex Murdaugh. That's because the judge dismissed a juror for apparently sharing her opinion on evidence with at least three other people outside of the courtroom.
Fox's Jonathan Sari reports on what the prosecution and defense told the jury in closing arguments.
It becomes your duty as jurors to analyze and to evaluate the evidence and determine that evidence which convinces you of its truth.
Jurors in the double murder trial of Alec Murdaugh have begun deliberations after listening to hours of closing arguments.
We've shown conclusively that SLED failed miserably in investigating this case.
Murdaugh's team poking hole after hole in the investigation, but making an important admission, addressing Murdaugh's lie about being at the kennels the night of the killings.
He lied because that's what addicts do, addicts lie. He lied because he had a closet full of skeletons, that he didn't want any more, any more scrutiny on him.
The defense taking issue with the motive presented by the state that Murdaugh's financial misdeeds were about to be exposed, leading him to kill his wife and son, showing evidence Murdaugh asked his drug dealer to shoot him in the head.
So when Alex is at financial collapse, he doesn't go kill somebody else. He tries to end it himself.
The prosecution pushed back on the defense in their rebuttal.
Your wife and your son have just been killed, and you worried about having a lawyer run?
The jury will have to decide whether it can reach a verdict based on circumstantial rather than direct evidence. Murdaugh has pleaded not guilty to both murder charges. In Atlanta, Jonathan Sari, Fox 26 News.
Well, it has been nearly a month since the Ohio train derailment, and we're learning that the Norfolk Southern CEO will soon face lawmakers. East Palestine residents say that they're hoping to get some answers about the long-term effects of that toxic spill. Alan Shaw will testify before a Senate committee next week at Capitol Hill. He has also been subpoenaed to appear before the Pennsylvania State Senate. Wastewater from the site is being sent to Deer Park where Texas Molecular will store it.
A North Texas high school football coach has resigned following an investigation into an offseason workout that landed several players in the hospital. In a message to parents and staff, Rockwell ISD announced John Harrell had left his position. Parents have hospitalized students say that the kids were made to do hundreds of push-ups. The investigation led to new recommendations for future workouts, including extra oversight and consultations with conditioning specialists. Well, a judge has sided with Cowboys' great Michael Urban in his defamation lawsuit against Marriott Hotels. A federal court has ruled the hotel giant must turn over any video it has related to the case. Urban is suing Marriott for $100 million after claiming he was falsely accused of misconduct by a female employee at a hotel in Phoenix. The NFL Network pulled him from Super Bowl coverage following this incident.
Happy Texas Independence Day, bet you didn't know that... Bet you didn't know that today is that day. On this day in 1936, the Texas Declaration of Independence was adopted, marking out independence from Mexico. Nine years later, the Republic of Texas was annexed to the U.S., becoming the 28th state. Fifty-nine people signed the Texas Declaration of Independence, including Sam Houston, who was born on this day in 1793. Only one of the documents remain today. There were a total of five copies that were made. It was found at the U.S. Senate Department and is now at the Texas State Archives in Austin. Well, the Texas Rent Relief Program will reopen this month, giving those who are eligible up to 18 months of rent assistance.
The Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs has about $96 million in remaining funds. The portal will begin accepting applications at 8:00 a.m. on March 14th through Tuesday, March 28th. For more information and a link to apply, just go to our website, fox26houston.com. The number of people applying for unemployment benefits in the U.S. fell for the third straight week. The Labor Department says applications for jobless claims for the week ending February 25th fell to 190,000. That's down 2,000 from the week before. Now, that is good news for American workers, but potentially bad news in the fight against inflation by the Federal Reserve, which will likely raise interest rates again. Well, the United States has not made significant progress in the gender pay gap in the past 20 years. A new study found that since 2002, on average, women make about 82 cents for every dollar a man earns in the same job. Those positions include many jobs, such as childcare and frontline health workers. And women are remarkably underrepresented in high-paying jobs and executive positions.
We have, you know, large segments of the workforce concentrated in industries that we undervalue primarily because women, and particularly women of color disproportionately fulfill those positions.
The pay and equity impacts Hispanic women the most severely, earning just 65% as much as white men. Black women earn 70% as much, and Asian women have the closest in pay difference, making 93% as much as white men earn.
Houston ISD and the Houston Texans joined up together for Houston Reads Day, which falls on Dr. Seuss's birthday, which is today. Texans players and HIC staff read children's books to Bruce Elementary School students. Houston Reads Day was started to bring awareness to the literacy crisis in our city. Each student also received a book from Dr. Seuss and school supplies. You know vitamin D. Well, can it actually fend off dementia? Coming up, the results of a new study.
New severe thunderstorm watch has been issued that includes portions of central Texas and the Austin area. I'll let you know when our threat for severe weather will start to really increase, coming up. Our threat for severe weather will start to really increase, coming up.
Injured, call Morgan &amp; Morgan for the people.
Family is just very important. She's my sister, and we depend on each other a lot.
She's the rock of the family.
She's the person who holds everything together.
It's a battle, you know, I'm gonna beat her.
Ketruza and chemotherapy meant treating my cancer with two different types of medicine.
In a clinical trial, Ketruza and chemotherapy was proven to help people live longer than chemotherapy alone. Ketruza is used to treat more patients with advanced lung cancer than any other immunotherapy. Ketruza may be used with certain chemotherapies as your first treatment if you have advanced non-squamous, non-small cell lung cancer and you do not have an abnormal EGFR or ALK gene. Ketruza can cause your immune system to attack healthy parts of your body during or after treatment. This may be severe and lead to death. See your doctor right away if you have cough, shortness of breath, chest pain, diarrhea, severe stomach pain, severe nausea or vomiting, headache, light sensitivity, eye problems, irregular heartbeat, extreme tiredness, constipation, dizziness or fainting, changes in appetite, thirst or urine, confusion, memory problems, muscle pain or weakness, fever, rash, itching or flushing. There may be other side effects. Tell your doctor about all your medical conditions, including immune system problems. If you've had or plan to have an organ or stem cell transplant, receive chest radiation, or have a nervous system problem.
It feels good to be here for being on.
Living longer is possible. It's true. Ketruza from Merck. Ask your doctor about Ketruza.
Before the Xfinity Ten G Network, we didn't have internet that let us play all at once.
Every device in every room?
Why are you up here? With speeds like this, I can't even dream of what he'll be able to do.
Get Xfinity Internet for just $25 a month with no annual contract during our limited-time launch celebration.
You have no idea how good you've got it.
Huh?
What a time to be alive.
Introducing the next generation 10G network, only from Xfinity.
This is Ford Truck Month, Texas. Time to get up and get into Ford F-Series, America's best-selling trucks for 46 years straight, including Ford F-150 and the all-new Ford Superduty. Or check out Ford Maverick and Ford Ranger. So get into Ford Truck Month, Texas, and see what a built Ford tough truck can do for you. There's a great selection in stock. Drive a new Ford F-150 today with zero percent, zero down and zero payments for 90 days plus complimentary maintenance. See your best in Texas Ford dealer.
For the house so far, Next Level Chef is the number one unscripted show.
You guys came to learn, right?
We want to get out of the basement.
Fox Thursday, it's platform pandemonium. What's the grab?
A lot of sauces.
Sauces? Is Team Ramsey about to implode? It's undercooked. Get it back in the pan, get it in the pan!
Tonight at 7 on Fox 26.
In Health Watch, taking vitamin D may slow or prevent dementia. Researchers from Canada and Britain monitored a group of more than 12,000 people who did not have dementia at the time. Those who took vitamin D had a 40% decrease in dementia detections compared to participants who did not take the vitamins. But researchers say that they still need to hold clinical trials to confirm this connection.
When it comes to healthy eating, it looks like Texas's favorite fast-food chain is outdoing its competitors. One study says, Whataburger. Whataburger, I just said Whataburger, like a non-Texan. Sorry about that. Apparently, they have the healthiest cheeseburger in the nation. A survey conducted by Gambling.com looked at standard cheeseburgers from fast-food chains across the country, and it analyzed burgers on their sugar, fat, salt, as well as caloric content. The data led them to find a Whataburger with cheese was the healthiest. Meanwhile, Burger King was ranked the unhealthiest cheeseburger.
But it's still a burger. It's still not that healthy, okay? And they're talking about just the basic burger here, the basic, not the fancy one everyone gets here.
Right, which is what?
Well, I did a TikTok reviewing just the basic burger from Whataburger. It didn't go well. You can go check it out. It took some heat.
What are you talking about?
But everybody orders like the patty melt with the cheese and the green chilies. This is just the basic cheeseburger. And it's, it's still a fast-food burger, so don't take it as like, oh, I'm being healthy by eating this, right?
Right, exactly. I understand, but it might make you feel.
Exactly, a little bit better about splurging. All right, coming up next, the trucking industry is facing new pollution rules. A live report on why some companies say the regulations could put them out of business. Some companies say the regulations could put them out of business.
Just like each cell in your body has identical genetic information, every Kelsey Siebold clinic shares the same DNA.
Uniquely compassionate.
Seamlessly coordinated.
And purposely patient-centered. It's a unique care model pioneered by Dr. Mavis Kelsey in 1949.
Today, medical science has advanced.
And we've remained at the forefront of that change.
But the building blocks that make us who we are will never change because it's simply in our DNA.
Kelsey Siebold Clinic, changing the way health cares.
As the HEB bull master, I always get excited for the season because it's the most wonderful time of year for crawfish. And at HEB, we sell more crawfish in Texas than anyone. We're talking big, fresh, live Louisiana crawfish. Plus, with our in-store boils, we do the prepping, spicing and cooking. So you can just pinch, pull and be merry. HEB, here crawfish season is better.
This is not a lawsuit. You don't have to go to court, give a deposition or take any risk. You just have to file your claim and wait for your check to arrive. And it starts by calling 833-FOR-ASBESTIS to find out if you qualify. There's no fee, no obligation, no risk and no out-of-pocket cost. We handle all the research and paperwork, and we only get paid once you start cashing your checks. Call 833-FOR-ASBESTIS to qualify and get your asbestos claims filed. Even spouses and children of industrial workers may qualify for asbestos compensation.
Guys, are you struggling with ED and sick of the pills? Well, we now have a major medical breakthrough. Our wave technology is clinically shown to open up and repair blood vessels, treating the root cause problem of ED. No pills and no side effects. If you are ready to regain your love life, call us now and you'll get the ultrasound and assessment totally free. Also, a gift that can produce rapid results. You're gonna love that. And today, Thursday only, tune-up treatments are included. This means that if you notice results fading in the future, we will retreat you free of charge, and that's good for calls today, Thursday only. Guys, it's time to get your love life back.
Put a stop to your ED. Call today, Thursday, March 2nd, and you'll qualify for the exam, assessment, ultrasound and special gift free, plus five tune-up treatments at no charge. This $800 value is free to those who call today only, March 2nd. Call Silverleaf Medical Clinic at 713-843-7000. This offer ends today.
Ooh, it's cold outside. Time to protect your vehicle from winter's wrath. Of course, the hot sun can be tough on vehicles, too. You need weather tech. All year round. Come on. Protect your investment. Laser-measured floor liners and cargo liner will shield the carpeting from sand and snow. For your interior, there's seat protector and sun shade, plus mud flaps and bump step for the exterior. Border American.
Coming up tonight on D News Edge Early Edition, cracking down on street racing after a number of drivers here in the Houston area were caught doing illegal stunts. We'll tell you what city officials say they're doing now to fight this. Also, a Texas flight bound from Florida makes an emergency landing after fire breaks out inside the plane. You've got to see this video. We'll tell you what sparked this unexpected blaze when we see you right here in about 15 minutes. For D News Edge Early Edition at 6.
Well, for the first time in two decades, the EPA has released new standards for semi-trucks to help lower air pollution.
But some smaller trucking companies fear that the additional cost for these environmentally-friendly vehicles could push them out of the industry. Fox's Rebecca Castor is live in New Orleans tonight to explain. Rebecca?
Caroline Rashi, it will be several years before these trucks hit the road, but small business owners are preparing now. Truckers we spoke with say, of course, they also want cleaner air, but it's gonna come at a price, and it could easily trickle down to the consumer. At John &amp; John in Crowley, Louisiana, trucking has been the family business for nearly 100 years. This is my grandfather. We started the business in 1925. He turned it over to my dad. Today, William John runs the business with his two brothers. And like other family-run trucking companies across the U.S., they're questioning how they'll afford the new EPA-approved trucks. With new regulations, the price of these trucks here will go up probably $10,000 to $15,000 apiece. And someone has to pay for it. The options we have, we comply or we go out of business. By 2027, semis on the market must have engines that emit less nitrogen oxide, a gas that's been linked to hardened lung problems.
I'd say, right now, we are all paying for the pollution from, from these trucks. We're paying in terms of higher hospital bills and asthma, missed work, missed school days. Um, we are all breathing in that dirtier air. Reinventing that truck pollution is one of the best ways that we can improve air quality and improve people's health.
John would like to see the government help mom-and-pop trucking companies pay for the extra costs. It's good for the environment, it's good for our health, yes. I'm all about it. But we're gonna need help somewhere to help absorb this cost. Being a family-owned company, it will, it will be a financial hit. Because of its potential impact on the trucking industry, a group of Republican senators is pushing for the new EPA rule to be overturned. In New Orleans, Rebecca Castor, Fox 26 News.
Communities in the West are still dealing with heavy snowfall, strong winds, power outages and dangerous road conditions from a series of powerful winter storms. Fox's correspondent William La Genessa is following the wild weather from Los Angeles.
The snow just won't go away. A major winter storm still lingering over much of the West just days after a different system brought high winds and massive snowfall to multiple states. Among the hardest hit, San Bernardino County, just east of Los Angeles, where Monday officials declared a local emergency still in effect as stranded residents deal with property damage and dwindling supplies.
Plowing is going to continue over the course of the next several days, upwards of a week, back into some of our communities. We need our residents to help take care of each other.
Further north, heavy snowfall closed Yosemite National Park up to 15 feet falling in some areas, making most roads impassable. But some park rangers say that's not necessarily a bad thing. What we always like is a big snowpack, and that's cold, because what happens, we kind of look at it like a bank. You know, you bank all the snow up in the high country, and then in the warm weather, the water comes down. All that snow and wind keeping utilities busy. About 80,000 customers in California are still without power as crews work to restore service. And in warmer areas, rain is causing major flooding, prompting new warnings that residents stay off the roads.
What did Punxsutawney Phil say? We were supposed to have six more weeks of winter or something? Yeah, I guess we're getting it.
The storm system is now heading into the Rockies where it's expected to bring ice and snow to the Midwest and Northeast, and possible tornadoes in the South. In Los Angeles, William La Genessa, Fox 26 News.
Well, the weather also becoming a big concern here, especially as the rodeo is underway. Meteorologist Ramisha Shade joining us now as she's tracking this system moving through Texas. Ramisha?
Well, we've been talking about it all week long. We've been anticipating that threat for severe weather, and these storms are really starting to get going just to the west of Austin. You can see that big squall line there. It is pushing east, and we do now have some severe thunderstorm warnings for these cells that are developing damaging winds, potentially over 60 miles per hour, hail, heavy rain, all possible with this line of storms, and even an isolated tornado threat. Severe thunderstorm watch has been issued until 10:00 p.m. That does include Austin and San Antonio, does not include the Houston area just yet, but we will monitor these storms and see if they remain around severe levels as they get closer to us around 9:00 to 10:00 p.m. So right now, just a few light rain showers extending from downtown Houston up towards Liberty, Livingston. We've had a few sprinkles around the Woodlands as well, but nothing severe at this point. We do have a lot of wind out there, even outside of the storm. It's just been a very breezy, windy day, that strong southerly flow ushering in all of that moisture and helping to set the stage for that potential for severe weather. So we've got gusts near 30 miles per hour in Houston right now, so that could wreak a little havoc out at the rodeo with those carnival rides. Of course, if the wind gets stronger than 35 miles per hour, they would have to shut down the rides temporarily. So we hope that doesn't happen, but we will be monitoring things closely. Our rain and storm timeline shows that the rain and storm chances really jump up between 8:00 and 11:00 p.m. So factor that into your plans tonight. Then after midnight, those rain chances and storm chances really start to fall off. What types of threats are we talking about? I think for us, the main threat will be a few damaging wind gusts possible, maybe around 60, 70 miles per hour, some hail around quarter-size. Isolated tornado threat, slim, but it's still there, so we're monitoring that. And some brief heavy downpours that could impact your plans tonight. Speaking of plans tonight, maybe you're heading out to see Lauren Daigle out at the rodeo. That's gonna be a huge performance, fun, exciting. It's indoors, thank goodness, but outside for the other rodeo events, it's gonna be stormy and windy, but dry and cooler for the next few nights. We've got Bun Bee Southern takeover for tomorrow, and then we've got Walker Hayes as we go into Saturday. So the weekend looking awesome. Once we get through the storms for tonight, pleasant, dry, bright for your weekend outdoor plans.
Fox 26 has joined with the Defender Network, delivering news and information to the area's black community. Here now is managing editor Rashonda Tate. Rashonda, this week is designated Obesity Care Week. What is so important about this week for communities of color?
Yeah, this is really important because the statistics show that African-Americans, 50% of African-Americans are obese, and four out of every five black women are obese. And so Obesity Care Week really looks at taking a look at what causes that and how to combat it.
Wow, and it is super important to be aware of all these things so that we can get the community healthier.
That's right, and it's all about creating those things that make it easy. Part of the biggest problem is that only 8% of black families live near a grocery store. Um, you compare that, there's about 31% compared to white families. And so it's about changing those disparities and allowing them access to not only healthy food options, but just able to get to their doctors and things to take care of and make sure they monitor their healthy weight.
Absolutely. Well, next up, a $4 million gift for Fort Bend County. Talk about where that money will go and the takeaway for people in that area.
Yeah, this is a big deal. This is coming to Fort Bend County and Kendallton, which is right southwest of Rosenberg. And it will be used, Commissioner Dexter McCoy, Fort Bend County Commissioner, was spearheaded this along with Congressman Pete Olson. So this is a bipartisan effort to preserve and to build up a historic memorial. And it will honor some of the slaves that were buried there, the enslaved people. But that is where Barbara Jordan is from. Uh, Texas's first African-American sheriff is from there. And $4 million will be used to preserve that cemetery and build a memorial that the commissioner thinks will get worldwide attention.
Awesome, well, I want everybody to listen up to this one. The Defender, Rashonda, also dug into five apps that parents need to be aware of when it comes to their kids.
You know, one of the biggest things we've found is a lot of parents go.
is a lot of parents go, "Not my child." Yes, your child. We found that about 75% of teenagers, whether their parents know it or not, are online. And there are several apps that the parents need to be aware about. One of them, Omegle, is really looking at hooking your teen up with random strangers. And then there are some that they really need to pay attention to. It's a calculator app. The parents think they log on and they have a calculator, their kids have a calculator. It's actually an app to hide things they don't want their parents to see.
This is a great article for anyone to read. Adults, too, can have these apps on your phone, and you know, you might want to be aware of that if you're in a relationship or something.
That's right.
Easy ways to hide things. So definitely read that one. It might help spot a few things you are unaware of. Rashonda, thank you so much for joining us. We have links to each of these stories at fox26houston.com. We have links to each of these stories at fox26houston.com.
This new segment is brought to you by Mike Powell Insurance. Call today, save today.
At Kroger, we want our fresh produce to meet your expectations, which is why we do up to a 27-point inspection to check for things like color and scarring. Because when it comes to fresh, higher standards mean fresher produce. Kroger, fresh for everyone.
We have been dwelling in possibilities since 1954. I'm Mark Wallace, and I've had the distinct privilege of leading Texas Children's for the last 33 years. We are the largest women's and pediatric healthcare system in the country. Today, we have a beautiful pavilion for women, the largest transplant program in the country, the nation's number-one heart center, and over 120 locations in Texas.
Texas Children's, the difference is life-changing.
This is Ford Truck Month, Texas. Time to get up and get into Ford F-150, part of F-Series, America's best-selling trucks for 46 years straight. All amped up and ready for work or play. Plus, there's a great selection in stock and ready for delivery today. So get into Ford Truck Month, Texas, and see what a built-for-tough truck can do for you. Drive a new Ford F-150 today with 0% zero down and zero payments for 90 days, plus complimentary maintenance. See your best-in-Texas Ford dealer.
We're a AAA family.
We found out about AAA insurance through a friend who had actually mentioned it a while ago. We ran the numbers, and it totally worked.
We looked at the statement for our previous insurer, and then AAA Insurance, definitely, we've seen a huge difference.
Switch to insurance through AAA Texas today, and you could save an average of $483 on auto insurance. Compare that to State Farm, GEICO, even Allstate. Call now for your free AAA full-picture quote to find out how much you could save.
By switching over to AAA Insurance, we saved over $450. So with our savings, he bought more equipment.
More money means more practice equipment.
In his world.
Why didn't we do this earlier? Why did it take so long?
We're AAA family now.
AAA Insurance allows us to do so much more with our kids and spend more time with them.
Find out how much you could save by switching to insurance through AAA Texas. Call 877-585-2258 for your free AAA full-picture quote today. You'll be glad you did.
When your door is always open, so is the fridge. At Kroger, however you shop, in-store, pickup, or delivery, you get the same great prices, deals, and rewards. That's a win-win-win. Kroger, fresh for everyone.
This newscast is brought to you by Advanced Hair Restoration, Houston's simple one-day hair loss treatment.
All right, taking a live look right now, Barbara and Carol, they are doing just fine with this weather coming in. And you know, when we were talking about the story with Chandler and the eggs coming out, well, the brown eggs, why are they brown? Why are they white?
That's right. So I did some Googling, and I actually found out that it depends on the color of the feathers.
Oh.
So it basically says here that the eggshell color depends on the breed of the hen. Generally speaking, white-shell eggs come from the hens with white feathers, while brown-shell eggs are produced by hens with brown feathers. That came straight from Google.
There we go.
So there we go. Yeah, so I don't know if like one's better than the other. It doesn't seem that way, so...
But it's just good to know that that's why.
Yeah, I'm still taking the fresh eggs, though. Those look better.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, you know what? There's another sign that former daytime talk show host Wendy Williams is hoping for a comeback. Onlookers tell the Sun that a, quote, "huge crew" was spotted with Wendy at a popular New York City restaurant. Another source said that the filming was a part of a reality show on Wendy's Life. This would be the first time that Williams would be talking, being in the spotlight, since her daytime slot was given to Sherri Shepherd last year.
Well, Nike's Air Jordans are some of the most popular shoes of all time, and sneaker experts say that these shoes may smash some records at auction. Six pairs of NBA championship game sneakers worn by Michael Jordan, known as the Dynasty Collection, are being auctioned off by Sotheby's in Dubai. Some collectors believe that they will go for anywhere between $20 and $100 million.
You're watching D News Edge Early Edition.
Right now at 6 o'clock, we have the latest on the reported state takeover of Houston ISD. What the superintendent just said at a meeting tonight as reaction continues to pour in. Plus, cracking down on street racing after more and more drivers are being caught doing illegal stunts, the penalties they could now face. And we're tracking the strong but quick line of storms moving through the Houston area as thousands are heading to NRG for tonight's rodeo. D News Edge Early Edition starts right now. Thanks so much for joining us here, everyone. I'm Jonathan Martin, and topping your rundown, the quick line of storms expected to roll into the Houston area. In fact, this is a live look over the Houston rodeo grounds. You can see the carnival is still going on tonight, where thousands are also expected to arrive there for the concert. So we'll see how things go. We do want to show you this video that was shot earlier today. It shows the strong gusts of wind and also some light sprinkling you might be able to see as well. This was out in west Houston. Meteorologist Ramisha Shade has been keeping a close eye on tonight's weather. She has a look at what we can expect. Ramisha?
Well, Jonathan, we've already been dealing with wind gusts around 30 miles per hour in the Houston area. So if they get stronger than 35 miles per hour, that could mean a temporary shutdown of some of those rides out at the carnival at the Houston rodeo. We don't want that to happen, but of course, it is a possibility. But it is going to get a little rowdy tonight, but the main significant tornado outbreak should stay two hours north over portions of North Texas up towards Dallas, where there have been numerous tornado warnings coming out around that area. Tornado watch up towards Dallas and Waco until 10:00 p.m. Severe thunderstorm watch now just to our west. That does include Hallitzville, Austin, San Antonio until 10:00 p.m. Notice this big line of storms and numerous warnings associated with this line. That is the line of storms we're going to have to deal with a little bit later, especially around 8, 9, 10 p.m. That will be moving through here. But right now, it's still just to the west of Austin. These storms are capable of producing strong, potentially damaging wind, quite a bit of hail, and also some heavy rain, and possibly a brief tornado. So that is the concern for our area tonight. At this point, just some spotty light rain from Livingston to Liberty to portions of Houston. So nothing severe to worry about just yet, but you need to stay alert because we definitely have that potential for some of those storms becoming severe. Right now, it's just warm and breezy out there with a few light rain showers. Temperature's still not far from 80 degrees for many of you. So we are feeling that warmth, awaiting that line of storms, which will likely push through between about 8:00 p.m. and 11:00 p.m. So that means that the concert out at the rodeo could be impacted. Of course, the concert is indoors, but if you're heading in or heading out, you may run into some rowdy weather. Heavy rain, strong wind gusts, some lightning. So be careful out there. Make sure to have that Fox 26 Weather app and keep it here. Of course, we will keep you posted.
Governor Greg Abbott has called up emergency response resources in preparation for the severe storms moving across the state. He's also renewed the state disaster declaration for drought conditions in 86 Texas counties. This is as the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service is forecasting high fire danger conditions across the west and southern parts of our state. And don't forget, you can stay ahead of the weather by downloading the Fox 26 Weather app. Keep track of any flood warnings. They connect it with our interactive radar. You can also get hour-by-hour forecasts. You can download it right now if you don't have it already on fox26houston.com or in your app store today. Now to the latest on the possible state takeover of Houston ISD, which we are hearing from the mayor and other sources. They say it could happen as soon as next week. Right now, this is a live look at a Houston ISD meeting, which started about an hour ago. At last check, you can see the board is not up front because they are in a closed session, but you do see a few people waiting around there. Our Domale Keith has been on this story. She is live near downtown after speaking with the state lawmaker who wrote the bill years ago to allow for takeover. Domale?
Yeah, Jonathan, State Representative Harold Dutton's bill passed in 2015 saying if a school is failing for five consecutive years, then the state has two options: to close the school or take over the district. And HISD has had dozens of schools receiving repeated D and F ratings, including Wheatley High School that failed seven years in a row. Wheatley now has a C rating, and the district overall has a B+. You may remember the Texas Education Agency started talking about a takeover years ago when there was chaos within the school board, failing schools, and corruption allegations at HISD headquarters. Now, the mayor says perhaps there should be a third option now that HISD is doing so well. He says perhaps there should be a bill that should be written allowing HISD to remain in control, avoiding a state takeover.
Just because the state can doesn't mean that you should, and it doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. And it is not the right thing to do for all of these kids. The greatest fear I have is that we don't do something for all these children's education in northeast Houston.
Now, at 5 o'clock, you heard HISD Superintendent Millard House say a few words just a few minutes ago. He gave an updated statement.
As of today, the district has not received an official notice from TEA. I remain laser-focused on fulfilling my duties as superintendent alongside our Board of Trustees to provide the best possible educational outcomes for all HISD students regardless. My team and I will continue to implement our community-informed strategic plan, which is delivering results, as you heard today in reference to the taper data, to ensure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing for HISD students and families. The district will provide an update for our students, families, and community as soon as we receive official information from TEA.
Now, I reached out to the TEA, and it is not confirming that it has decided to take over HISD. The state is only saying that they are still reviewing that option. Reporting live, I'm Domale Keith, Fox 26 News.
Domale, thank you for that update. While officials tonight are giving a stern warning about street takeovers, over the past few weekends, cars in Houston and in Austin were involved in street racing, which led to multiple arrests. Harris County Sheriff Ed Gonzalez says it's not just joyriding at these events. Other criminal activity is happening.
So I think it's important to note that it's more than just having fun or hanging out. This is very dangerous activity. We find a lot of other illicit criminal activity that is commonplace at many of these events. And so that's why we're taking it very seriously.
District Attorney Kim Og was also there and emphasized if you are involved in these events and are caught, you will be arrested and your car will be impounded. Several new apartments in Third Ward, built to help the homeless get back on their feet, were recently broken into and ransacked. The property is managed by Covenant House, a faith-based organization that has helped homeless teens for nearly 40 years. Well, shortly after they were decorated, an executive director says she came back to find everything inside stolen, including the kitchen sinks. And to make matters worse, the thieves left bathtubs running to flood the units.
There's still water in here from when this happened. We're trying to get it up quickly because we don't want to have to deal with mold issues on top of everything else. But our early estimates of our out-of-pocket cost are probably going to be in the $80,000 to $100,000 range.
Well, if you know anything about who might be responsible for this, you're asked to call Houston Police. Traffic was delayed this afternoon in La Porte after an 18-wheeler carrying lithium-ion batteries overturned. This happened off State Highway 146 in Barbers Cut. Officials brought in hazmat crews, but they say they did not find any leaks. The container was transported back to a warehouse. Also, look at this, a scare for passengers on a Spirit Airlines flight bound for Orlando after a fire broke out on the plane. Cell phone video shows crew members and passengers dousing the overhead compartment with water, also using a fire extinguisher. Now, one of those passengers, a retired firefighter, suffered minor burns on his fingers. Firefighters say it was caused by a battery in someone's carry-on luggage. So the flight from Dallas had to divert to Jacksonville, Mississippi. 10 people had to be taken to the hospital, but no one was seriously hurt. Later this month, eligible Texas residents can apply for rent and utility assistance. The Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs will reopen the Texas Rent Relief Application Portal starting March 14th and go through March 28th. First-time applicants could be eligible for up to 18 months of assistance, and that includes past due payments. To find out how to apply, you can head to fox26houston.com and click on the article for this story. All right, now, we are going to some breaking news. We are learning on the, this is on the Alex Murdaugh double murder trial. The jury has reached a verdict after hours of deliberation. So let's listen right into this.
Juror numbers.
Number 1,93. Was this your verdict? Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror 2,2. I'm sorry, juror 2,54. Is this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror 3,26. Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror 6, juror 5,30. Was this your verdict? Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is this your verdict?
Yes.
Juror five four four. Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror five seven two. Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror five seven eight. Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror five eight nine. Was this your verdict? Is it still your verdict? Juror six three zero. Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror seven two nine. Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror eight two six. Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Juror eight six four. Was this your verdict?
Yes.
Is it still your verdict?
Yes.
Your honor, the jury has been polled.
Thank you. The juror, jury has been polled and the verdict is a unanimous verdict. If you will bring the alternate juror out and have her, uh, have a seat in the audience, please.
All right, you were there listening to some breaking news. Alec Murdaugh, the former South Carolina attorney, now convicted on all counts of murder. Uh, he was accused, now convicted of shooting and killing his wife and son and covering it up. Uh, this was a case a lot of people had been watching, and the jury had really had to reach a verdict based on circumstantial evidence rather than direct evidence in this case. We're going to have much more on this coming up tonight at nine, and of course, also on our website with some new updates. But again, Alec Murdaugh found guilty on all charges. And that tonight wraps up your rundown, but we have much more coming up, including a look at the western states still dealing with heavy snowfall and power outages and the conditions leaving thousands of travelers now stranded at airports across the country. Leaving thousands of travelers now stranded at airports across the country.
This new segment is brought to you by Mike Powell Insurance. Call today, save today. You've seen this. Now experience this.
I'm thinking this could keep your pie from bursting.
Creative.
I'm going to use this lift to create some perspective.
Entertaining.
If anybody got fired because they didn't go out to work in this, call us.
Fox twenty-six.
Storytelling with attitude. Moments happen here.
At Kroger, we want our fresh produce to meet your expectations, which is why we do up to a twenty-seven point inspection to check for things like color and scarring. Because when it comes to fresh, higher standards mean fresher produce. Kroger, fresh for everyone.
Numbers move you, but some can stop you in your tracks, like the tens of thousands of people who were diagnosed with certain HPV-related cancers. For most people, HPV clears on its own, but for those who don't clear the virus, it can cause certain cancers. Gardasil nine is a vaccine given to adults through age forty-five that can help protect against certain diseases caused by HPV, including cervical, vaginal, vulva, anal, and certain head and neck cancers, such as throat and back of mouth cancers and genital warts. Gardasil nine doesn't protect everyone and does not treat cancer or HPV infection. Your doctor may recommend screening for certain HPV-related cancers. Women still need routine cervical cancer screenings. You shouldn't get Gardasil nine if you've had an allergic reaction to the vaccine, its ingredients, or are allergic to yeast. Tell your doctor if you have a weakened immune system, are pregnant, or plan to be. The most common side effects include injection site reactions, headache, fever, nausea, dizziness, tiredness, diarrhea, abdominal pain, and sore throat. Fainting can also happen. Help protect what counts. Talk to your doctor or pharmacist about Gardasil nine.
They say the tighter you hold, the more the rope burns. There will be many storms ahead. Unrelenting strength to ignite the fire inside with grit buried beneath jagged scars. This is your fight for the things that call you home.
The heart. It's what moves us, keeps us growing strong. At Texas Children's Heart Center, they specialize in treating hearts like mine. They're always looking for new ways to keep our hearts healthy, using genetic testing, A I predictive programs, and minimally invasive procedures. The expert team of physicians help families stay healthy by never missing a beat.
Texas Children's Heart Center has been number one for six years in a row. Texas Children's, the difference is life-changing.
When your door is always open, so is the fridge. At Kroger, however you shop, in-store, pickup, or delivery, you get the same great prices, deals, and...
Welcome back. Dozens of tech giants are rushing into the artificial intelligence space with mixed results prompting some new fears of fake news spreading at an unprecedented rate. Fox's Evan Brown tonight has more in this edition of Fox on Tech.
Artificial intelligence, or A I, is all the rage these days in the tech world. Microsoft recently added the A I Chat G P T to its Bing search engine. Google two has an A I-powered chatbot, but what stops A I from spewing misinformation or fake news? Its encyclopedic patter may be relatable, but is it reliable?
Who's training them? What's the source of the data? And until we know those things, it's going to be very hard for somebody, um, I think, to rely on them.
Some tech CEOs are now floating the idea of a rating system like we have for the movies to evaluate articles and information delivered by A I search engines, hoping it will counterbalance the expected uptick in unregulated content as programs like Chat G P T become more popular.
Why don't we know all the content that's coming? Why can't we put a rating system on that? Without it, you're just exaggerating an already ex- existing serious condition.
And that's where Seeker comes in. It's a new search engine that uses A I to determine the reliability and political lean of news stories, helping users filter out what's valuable and what might be harmful.
What we're trying to do here is give pe- people who are, um, consuming massive volumes of news every day, a way to look at what is quality and what isn't.
And in addition to all that new software, a team from Johns Hopkins University is working on more A I technology using human brain cells. In Miami, Evan Brown, Fox News.
Now to that major winter storm still lingering over much of the west just days after a different system brought a lot of high wind and massive snowfall, snowfall rather, to multiple states. The state of the emergency is in effect in San Bernardino County, just east of Los Angeles. Now, further north, snow continues to fall after already being hit with fifteen feet of snow. Eighty thousand customers are in California there, still without power, as crews continue to work and restore services. And in warmer areas, rain is causing some major flooding.
What did Punxsutawney Phil say? We were supposed to have six more weeks of winter or something? Yeah, I guess we're getting it.
Well, the storm system is now heading into the Rockies where it's expected to bring ice and snow to the Midwest and northeast and possible tornadoes in the south as well. Well, back here in the Houston area, the storyline is the chance for some storms tonight. Let's get another check of our weather with meteorologist Ramisha Shade.
Well, that is right. Our threat for severe weather is still there. It looks like the worst of this significant severe weather outbreak and tornado outbreak will stay in North Texas, but for us, we've got plenty of warmth, plenty of moisture in place, and we could still have some rowdy weather here. Right now, cloudy, windy out there, temp still not far from eighty degrees. As many of you may be gearing up to head out to some rodeo events, you will want to make sure that you have a way to get those alerts, download that Fox twenty-six weather app, because we've got a line of storms getting closer, and they're likely going to be right over Houston around nine to ten P M. Right now, multiple tornado watches impacting northern portions of the state, including the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. We've got numerous tornado warnings around that area as well. We've got severe thunderstorm watches as well that have been posted, and we'll continue with this threat for severe weather. Severe thunderstorm watch until ten P M. That does include Austin and San Antonio. This is all developing out ahead of this strong cold front, and that line of storms will be getting closer to us over the next few hours. I think our main threat will be between seven P M and eleven P M, but right over Houston, as I mentioned, nine to ten P M, the highest likelihood of severe weather. We're talking about that threat for damaging wind gusts, maybe wind gusts over sixty miles per hour. hail threat, heavy rain threat will be with us, and there could be a brief spin-up of a tornado. That risk much higher off to the north, but it is something that we are monitoring closely. So the highest severe threat for our area will be up towards Huntsville, Livingston, Houston in that category, two out of five risk, and it is a much lower threat down towards the coast. Right now, just some spotty light rain showing up on the radar, a few showers up towards Livingston, Liberty, a few sprinkles off and on for the Houston area, but nothing severe at this point. We've had very windy conditions today, though. We still have gusts around twenty-five miles per hour in Houston, and those gusts have been around thirty miles per hour for some of you, even up to thirty-five miles per hour just a few hours ago around the Angleton area. So certainly some windy weather out there, and of course, that could impact the carnival rides out at the rodeo. Of course, if that wind becomes sustained over thirty-five miles per hour, that could mean a temporary shutdown of some of those rides. Hopefully that won't happen, but we are monitoring it closely. We for sure will have some storminess between eight P M and eleven P M. Heavy rain, lightning, thunder, maybe some strong wind gusts, and there's still that slim tornado threat. Those temperatures will be in the sixties and seventies as we go through this evening and tonight, and it is going to get pretty rowdy. Here is that line of storms pushing in by ten P M right over the city of Houston, and we'll continue with that threat for those storms as they roll off to the east. So certainly keep in mind that this system will be pushing through, best chance for storms between eight and eleven P M. After midnight, that storm threat really starts to fall off, and we will clear things out. Cooler and drier air will build in, and that will set the stage for gorgeous weather for this weekend. So it is going to be a little on the stormy side for a few hours tonight, but we will be rewarded with some gorgeous conditions Friday all the way through Sunday, lots of sunshine, temperatures feeling a lot more like early March. Highs in the seventies, overnight lows in the forties and fifties. You may get to pull out the jacket as you head out to the rodeo and some boots and the hat. It is going to be a gorgeous weekend. We are back to the eighties, though, next week as we turn up that heat, and we'll have a slim shot for rain Monday through Thursday.
All right, when we come back, a look at the headlines that have a lot of people talking, including a story about a middle school library that some parents are saying is almost pornographic. School library that some parents are saying is almost pornographic.
When I set out to build our farm, it was built for greatness. It was built for you, Morgan and Morgan.
Sometimes your stomach dreams about perfect food truck-style grilled cheese sandwiches tricked out with steak and bacon. And that, children, is where cravings come from. Sonic Steak and Bacon Grilled Cheese. Mmm, Sonic.
This is Ford Truck Month, Texas. Time to get up and get into Ford F-Series, America's best-selling trucks for forty-six years straight, including Ford F-one-fifty and the all-new Ford Super Duty. Or check out Ford Maverick and Ford Ranger. So get into Ford Truck Month, Texas, and see what a Ford tough truck can do for you. There's a great selection in stock. Drive a new Ford F-one-fifty today with zero percent, zero down, and zero payments for ninety days plus complimentary maintenance. See your best-in-Texas Ford dealer.
At Affordable Dentures and Implants, we believe in the healing power of a new smile, the way it makes you look and feel, the way a smile lights up a room so people can see the best version of you, which is why we make new smiles affordable for everyone, so you don't need to wait another day to get your smile back. Scan the Q R code to learn more or visit affordabledentures.com.
Go ahead and smile.
I've seen this movie before.
You have?
Sure. This is the part where all is lost and the hero searches for hope, then a mysterious figure reminds her that she has the farmer's home policy perk guaranteed replacement cost, and that her home will be rebuilt regardless of her limits or if the cost of materials is going up.
That's really something.
Get a whole lot of something with farmer's policy perks. Wait, I didn't ruin the ending, did I?
Yeah, yeah, you did.
We are farmers. Bum 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 bum.
I like to move it, move it. You like to move it.
We're reinventing our network.
Move it. I like to move it, move it. I like to move it, move it. I like to move it, move it. You like to move it. I like to move it, move it. You like to move it.
Fast, reliable, perfectly orchestrated. The United States Postal Service.
All of Sonic's under-two-dollar craves are under two bucks, so you can get something tasty without breaking the bank. Sonic under-two-dollar craves.
Sonic.
The number one unscripted show reaches a boiling point. It's undercooked. Get it back, get it back, get it in the...
Brought to you by your Houston-area Hyundai dealer.
Time now for a quick round of Wish We Were Kidding. Is a sixth grader from Maine suing his school district for having a quote pornographic book in the school's library? Well, sounds too fiction to be fact, but this one is actually real. Eleven-year-old knocks a jack, not only plans to sue, but read a passage from the book during a school board meeting. Well, the controversial book titled Nick and Charlie was checked out by the sixth grader, even though the reading advisory was for fourteen-year-olds. The story begins with two teen boys stealing wine from their parents and then proceeding to experiment with one another.
We're kissing again. We're rolling over. Obviously, you can see where this is going. Now, this book was at my middle school, and it was on a stand. When I rented it out to show my dad it, uh, the librarian asked if I wanted more and if I wanted a graphic novel version.
Well, furious parents say the district should put more restrictions on the books that they're allowing kids to check out and read. Fox News Digital did reach out for comment, but the school district there did not respond. Well, did a rare Jurassic-era insect show up at an Arkansas Walmart? I Wish We Were Kidding, but in fact, the giant lacewing insect you see here that once flourished in the age of the dinosaurs was found for the first time in decades. A scientist of all people picked it up while shopping, only to, to discover a few weeks later, it was a lacewing bug that had long been seen in North America. It hadn't been seen in more than fifty years, while renewing hope that there may be a relic of population of the bug undiscovered in the Ozark Mountains. And finally, does no one want to perform at King Charles' coronation? I Wish We Were Kidding, but that also seems to be real and seems to be the case. Artists including Adele, Elton John, Harry Styles, The Spice Girls, and Robbie Williams have reportedly said, no, no thanks. They've turned down the opportunity to perform during his coronation. While many did not give a reason why, some think the recent controversy surrounding the Royals may be playing a part in their decision. This news comes amid the eviction of Meghan and Harry from their Frogmore Cottage in Windsor. Still to come here at six o'clock, a new app that helps identify your pet's unique feature, and it could mean no more microchipping. Those details. Unique feature, and it could mean no more microchipping. Those details.
This new segment is brought to you by Mike Powell Insurance. Call today, save today.
Spring is the perfect time for a refresh, and at Ashley, you'll find the pieces you love. Shop now with financing options for every budget. Get sixty months no interest with no down payment. The Orange Event is happening now, only at Ashley.
To all the Chevy Silverado owners out there, the adventurers and the doers, thank you for making Chevy Silverado the number one best-selling retail full-size pickup. It's Chevy truck season. Get zero percent financing plus make no monthly payments for ninety days on all Silverado fifteen-hundred pickups and get one thousand dollars cash allowance on this Silverado with a turbo-high-output engine. Chevy drives Texas. Find new roads.
Before the Xfinity ten G network, we didn't have internet that would let us play all night.
Every device in every room?
Why are you up here? With speeds like this, I can't even dream of what he'll be able to do.
Get Xfinity Internet for just twenty-five dollars a month with no annual contract during our limited-time launch celebration.
You have no idea how good you've got it.
Huh?
What a time to be alive.
Introducing the next generation ten G network, only from Xfinity.
Who can you call when you need immediate help, any time of day or night? Always giving you and your family peace of mind. AAA's legendary roadside assistance is a network with over fifty thousand vehicles that respond to more than thirty-two million assistance calls every year.
If something happens and we're broken down, my family's not going to be stranded.
There are so many benefits to membership, and AAA is there. If you're locked out of your car, need a tow, run out of gas, have a flat tire, or a dead battery.
You know, if you have one flat tire or one battery service, that membership fee pays for itself.
Wherever you go, wherever you are, you can trust AAA to be there when you need them.
Join today for less than five dollars a month. We'll waive the membership admission fee, and as a special bonus, you'll receive a free one-year membership for two additional eligible family members and a twenty-five dollar Visa gift card. That's a combined value of up to a hundred and seventy-four dollars for only fifty-nine dollars for an annual membership. Don't wait another second. Call to join AAA right now.
The Orange Event is happening now, in store at Ashley. Shop hot deals like queen beds starting at five ninety-nine, or dining sets starting at three ninety-nine. Don't miss it. Our biggest event of the year is going on now, only at Ashley.
Well, a South Korean company, Pet Now, has developed a new app to identify your pet. Like a human fingerprint, Pet Now uses your dog or cat's unique nose print to identify their biometrics. So the hope is that the app can replace traditional microchipping. Owners just register their pet's face, so if the animal is lost, it can be identified through the face. The app uses A I to recognize the pet's biometrics, and is currently, they say, more than ninety-eight percent accurate. Well, tonight in Fox's primetime lineup, it's a new full night of episodes, new episodes here at seven o'clock. It's, uh, Next Level Chef, then at eight o'clock, Animal Control, and at eight-thirty, a new Call Me Cat. Then on the news at nine o'clock, a war vet's widow getting a Twilight wish granted, how she's able to see the area where her husband's plane went down in Italy. That's tonight at nine. But up next, it's You Bet Your Life with Jay Leno, and we'll see you right back here for the late news.
They're going all the way.
Here's your host, Jay Leno.
Welcome to You Bet Your Life. Thanks for tuning in. Senator Kevin, the man who can turn almost anyone into a contestant. Sometimes you can't tell, but it's pretty cool. Kev, what do you have today?
I've got a retired correctional officer who thinks prison women are creative.
See, there you go right there.
And an English Channel swimmer who repeatedly stung by jellyfish.
Okay, we'll find out what that's all about. Fourteen-year-old first two plays.
Kev, tell us the secret word. The slot mania secret word is?
Food.
Food, okay. Hey, if you like getting the big jackpot.
And there are likely other unintended consequences if this measure becomes law, as in discouraging serious foreign investment and crippling the ability of Texas businesses and universities to recruit potential employees subject to the ban on buying property here. The newsroom, Greg Gergen, Fox twenty-six News.
All right. Nice to meet you too. Is it Kiana? Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, it's Kiana, yes.
Very attractive ladies, and accomplished women. Good heavens, you swam the English Channel in thirteen hours?
Yeah, twelve hours and fifty-five minutes, so just shy of thirteen.
Wow, that's, whoa. How, how many miles is that, twenty-two?
Yes, it's a twenty-two point-to-point, but with the currents, it pulls you, so it's thirty. Uh, nonstop, no wet suit, jellyfish, very cold water, all the conditions.
Wow, and you also swam the hundred and twenty miles of the Hudson River?
I did, yes.
Okay, I, I'm exhausted riding in a boat on the Hudson River. Really?
Yes.
Is that non, it's not non-stop?
Not non-stop, it's over a few days, but you go about twenty miles per day.
Wow, okay.
Um, but yeah, you go by the Statue of Liberty. It was around Fourth of July week, so it was really special.
No wet suit or anything?
No wet suit on that one either.
Wow, all right. And you're a corrections officer or retired?
I'm a retired corrections officer, yes.
It, it, male prison or female prison?
Um, it's a, they do both. They do female and male prisons.
Okay.
But so we, um, actually work with the, the males.
Okay.
And the women as well.
Now, which is worse?
Uh, the women are worse.
Really? Now, you see, men would be more, right?
No, the women are the worst. They complain, they're, they're catty. The women are the worst. They complain, they're catty, the women are the worst.
Wow. Women complaining and catty, I've never heard that, Kev. I've never even heard anything like that. Wow, that's amazing. All right, well, look, I think you two will be fantastic contestants. You each have knowledge the other might not possess, because that can help you win the game. Now, you at home, you got a chance to win a two-day vacation stay. Kev, tell them how to play and win.
Use the camera on your phone to scan the QR code on your screen to play. Get the question right, and you just may win a two-day vacation stay from Wyndham Resort.
All right. And Kev Page is from my hometown, in Massachusetts.
All right.
That's pretty cool, wow, that's pretty neat. All right, here we go. The first decision you must make as a team is what category do you want to compete in? Here are your two choices up here on the screen. It's not Greek to me, or Jenny just bought the block.
What would you think? I would, I would go with Jenny just bought the block.
I was gonna say, I think we're ready.
What do you think that's about?
I think pop culture.
Pop culture, okay. These are questions about Jennifer Lopez. All right, here we go. Let's hope this category has a special bonus question, because that's a thousand dollars, you get that free and clear. Kevin's already shared the secret word. Either you say that, that's five hundred dollars, it's the same deal, free and clear. I'm gonna ask you five questions of increasing dollar value, the last question is double or nothing, and that's worth as much as five thousand dollars. All right, let's begin. Question one, for $250, it is multiple choice, so watch the screen. What relation is Jennifer Lopez to comedian George Lopez? Here are your choices: sister, niece, no relation, they've had relations?
Okay. Well, I, I don't think they've had relations.
Yeah, we can rule that one out. I'm not gonna, I don't think sister.
I don't, I don't think sister either. I don't think they're related.
You know, yeah, because I think I would have heard about it, yeah.
I don't think so either.
No, not related.
No relation at all, is that true? Let's see. No relation, there you go. $250. For five or all, the only Jennifer Lopez was born in the Bronx, both her parents hail from what island territories?
I know this one.
All right.
Yes, they are Puerto Rican.
All right, I love it. Because I have no idea, so I'm going you.
Okay, so we're gonna say Puerto Rico.
Puerto Rico? Puerto Rico, very good, okay. For another seven, true or false, J Lo has more rings than Ben Affleck and A-Rod has World Series rings?
They've been engaged, I know, once. Have they been engaged twice?
I, I believe they're engaged now. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
In the past, maybe it wasn't, they weren't engaged then?
No, so it's either, they've either been engaged twice. Do you know how many rings A-Rod has?
I'm gonna say it's more than, more than at least one, so let's, so let's go with it. Yeah, so I'm gonna say it's false.
Is it false?
Oh.
I still have my Ben Affleck-J Lo invitation from the first one. No, I do, I do, yeah, that's quite funny. All right, next question, for a thousand dollars, multiple choice, watch the screen. In 2002, Jennifer Lopez released a bestselling celebrity perfume called what? Here are your choices: Glow, Curious, Jenny, Love Don't Cost a Thing. Just kidding, just saying, I'm not.
Um, I happen to know this one as well. I know more about J Lo than I thought.
I love it, I love it.
So, I'm gonna go with Glow, I believe that's what it's called.
Yep, I would agree.
You would agree?
Yes.
So, let's do it.
Is it Glow? Glow, there you go. This is fantastic. You guys have earned seventeen hundred fifty dollars so far. When we come back, great chance to double our winnings, we go double or nothing on You Bet Your Life. You're doing great, you guys.
Promotional consideration provided by Slotomania, the number one free slots game. Download Slotomania now and get one million free points.
Okay, everyone, our mission is complete balanced nutrition. Together we support immune function, supply fuel for immune cells, and sustain tissue health.
Ensure with twenty-five vitamins and minerals, and ensure complete with thirty grams of protein.
When you really need to sleep, you reach for the really good stuff. ZQuil Ultra helps you sleep better and longer when you need it most. It's non-habit forming and powered by the makers of Nightwell. ZQuil Ultra, when you really, really need to sleep.
Yes! Millions of viewers have made Animal Control a hit.
That thing must be worth more than the sixteenth chapel. Which chapel?
Joel McHale needs a pack of lovable oddballs.
It's everything I thought it would be.
Yeah, this is nice, and we deserve it.
Tonight at eight on Fox 26.
At Kroger, we want our fresh produce to meet your expectations, which is why we do up to a twenty-seven point inspection to check for things like color and scarring. Because when it comes to fresh, higher standards mean fresher produce. Kroger, fresh for everyone.
Get ready, it's exciting, it's rooms to go. At 10 a.m. Saturday, March 4th, go! Shop the start of our amazing anniversary sale. Celebrating another year with big anniversary sales savings. Get special sixty-month interest-free financing with low monthly payments. Bet sixty months interest-free on living rooms, bedrooms, dining rooms, plus get added value with bonus buys. So, let's go, let's save. Shop the Rooms to Go Anniversary Sale, starting 10 a.m. Saturday.
When your door is always open, so is the fridge. At Kroger, however you shop, in-store, pickup, or delivery, you get the same great prices, deals, and rewards. That's a win-win-win. Kroger, fresh for everyone.
Welcome back to You Bet Your Life. Kiana Page, you've earned seventeen hundred fifty dollars, okay, doing very well. Before we put the bet in You Bet Your Life, now, you spent the night in a haunted house where, in England?
In England, of all places. Uh, we got an Airbnb, it looked beautiful, the photos, you know, as you expect, it was beautiful countryside in England.
Did they advertise it as a haunted Airbnb?
They didn't. So, and I'm like a big scaredy cat, so, you know, we pull up, and I should have known upon getting there, there was, you know, a well, then there was a cemetery, and I'm like, all right, trying to make the most of it, you're on vacation, right? You know, trying to keep the spirits high. But we go in, and, you know, as the days go by, I hear like doors shut, you know, random rooms, and I'm thinking, huh, that's a little funky, nobody's in that room, I don't know why the door shut, it's an old house, you know, whatever. Um, but at night, you would hear thumping around and, um, like underneath beds, as if kids were playing hide and go seek. And so, I, I didn't know that at the time, I just heard the thumping, I thought it was a little weird. Um, and after I left, the day we were leaving, the owner of the house said, "Oh, this used to be a schoolhouse, and some of the kids still, you know, lurk around." And I'm like, I wish I knew that!
So, what do you want to do, you guys? You want to take your money, go home, you want to double your money? You're a pretty good team, what do you think?
Right, we, we should go for it.
Your J Lo knowledge is exceptional. The category is still Jenny just bought the block, questions about Jennifer Lopez. Now, here is your double or nothing question for $3,500. Jennifer Lopez had created a music video for "That's the Way Love Goes" as a backup dancer to what other multi-talented performer?
Oh, okay. I think I know this one.
I think I'm singing the song in my head right now.
Yes.
And I want to say Janet Jackson.
Janet Jackson, yes. Ah, yes, it is.
So, you got Janet Jackson?
Yes.
You both agree it's Janet Jackson?
Yes.
Is it Janet Jackson? Yes, it's Janet Jackson, there you go. Nice job, ladies, for $3,500, there's your money right there. Okay, thanks for playing You Bet Your Life. Give them a big hand, everybody! And it's time for two brand-new contestants, before they come out. Kev, what's the next secret word?
The Slotomania's secret word is?
News.
News, okay. Kev, who will be found for the next game? Let's welcome Mark, who's obsessed with tiki bars. All right. And Julia, who will drive for hours to see the world's largest thing.
All right, well, welcome, Mark. You like to see the world's largest things, is that correct?
Yes, I drove eight hours each way to see the world's largest box of raisins.
Wow, now, were they actual raisins, or were they phony things made to look like raisins?
No, they're in there, they're in a big wooden box.
And, and where do you go to see that?
It was up in Fresno.
Right, and Fresno, what's not to look at there?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so you drive up, you look, how, how long do you look at a box of raisins? I mean, you drive, you make the, how long a drive was it?
It was eight hours.
Eight hours, okay, yeah. Got something to eat, you get there.
It was, it was a different time, uh, I was, I needed to leave my home.
Oh, I see.
And I went there.
And, and Mark, you're obsessed with tiki bars. You know, I wish you'd been alive in the era of Trader Vic's. You and my mother would have had a wonderful life. My mother loved Trader Vic's, she'd drink with the giant umbrellas and all those, oh, noises.
Yeah, very familiar with Trader Vic's.
Where have you gone in the world? Have you gone to the home of tiki culture?
Uh, well, actually, funny enough, I have. The home of tiki culture is actually right here in Hollywood. There we go, we learned something today.
You think it'd be Polynesian place or Hawaii? It's right there on, uh, Las Palmas, probably, somewhere.
Yeah, Las Palmas, well, there, it's no longer there unfortunately, but.
Oh, so it's not even there anymore?
Don the Beachcomber, uh, is actually the father of the tiki culture, and he made it right here in Hollywood in the nineteen thirties, and then it really took off, uh, during the post-World War for escapism. And it's got a revival, and, um, yeah, it's great.
I think you two will make a fascinating team. You each bring a different dynamic. And you at home, you got a chance to win a two-day vacation stay. Kev, tell them how to play to win that vacation.
Use the camera on your phone to scan the QR code on your screen to play. Get the question right, and you just may win a two-day vacation stay from Wyndham Resort.
Now, the first decision you have to make as a team is what category you want to choose. Two categories are coming up here, here we go. You can't win everything, or Jabba the Hutt.
Okay, I feel like Jabba the Hutt is gonna be coffee. Basically, did you agree with me on that? Yes, I'm, I'm.
I agree. It's really up to you, I'm not much of a coffee drinker.
Oh, my God.
So, it might be a weakness.
Oh, God, all right.
What do you think?
Let's just do, I feel like if you don't like coffee, maybe you can't win everything.
Let's do it.
Okay, you can't win, win everything.
You can't win everything, these are questions about famous losers. All right.
You seem excited, good, good.
Let's, let's hope, we'll be up there pretty soon. Let's hope this category has the bonus question too, because that's a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars, you keep that. Kevin shared the secret word, either you say it anytime, it's for the five hundred dollars, that is yours to keep as well. I'll ask you five questions of increasing dollar value, the last question is double or nothing, and that's worth as much as five thousand dollars, okay? All right, here we go. Question one, for $250, in 2016, what Midwest baseball team shed their lovable loser's image by winning their first World Series in a hundred and eight years?
Oh, yeah.
You don't have to whisper.
Sorry, my God.
Yeah, sorry, uh, Chicago.
I was gonna say Chicago Bears.
No, 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 no.
Cubs, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
God, okay, Chicago Cubs.
Yes, like, this is the teamwork, you see? He knows something you don't know, you may get the next one.
It was very sweet.
Your answer is Chicago Cubs?
Yes.
Is it the Chicago Cubs? That has to be. Yes, it is, Chicago Cubs. All right, Julia, here's your chance. For $500, this is multiple choice, which Hollywood power couple starred in the far from anti-comedy flop Geely? Here are your choices: Bennifer, Brangelina, Tomcat, Overpaid. There's two answers that are right right there.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Uh, yeah, uh, it is A, Bennifer.
I was gonna say Bennifer, because you were really excited when that came.
I was, yeah, yeah. Who's not excited about Bennifer?
That was a trust, I know, so I'm gonna agree with that.
Reunited.
I'm gonna agree with that, I'm gonna go with A, Bennifer.
Is it Bennifer? Yes, it is, all right. Mark and Julia, it's $750. Stick around after the break, more chance to earn even more money. If you like hitting huge jackpots, scan the QR code on your screen and download Slotomania.
Slotomania, the number one free-to-play slots game in the world, with millions of players and non-stop fun and excitement. Download Slotomania now and find out what will today spin.
Hi Grandma, I played baseball today.
Oh, that's great!
What position did you play?
First base.
That's what Grandpa used to play.
When our hearing wouldn't allow us to use a regular phone, it made us feel isolated.
It became difficult to communicate with our friends and family.
Clear captions was an easy solution for us.
Clear captions provides captions on a phone like captioning on your TV, so you can see what the caller is saying live as they say it.
Making it easy to understand and respond immediately.
There is no insurance or Medicare required. Clear captions service is provided at no cost to you through a federally funded program. We deliver, install, and train you on how to use your phone, all at no cost to you.
Give your loved ones the independence and connection they deserve.
Call now to see if you qualify to get a Clear Captions phone at no cost to you. Call 1-800-928-1803. That's 1-800-928-1803.
Time to slip in. All righty up. Get this paper. Looking good, dog.
He's, how do you do all this stuff?
Sketches, baby. Shoes made for all walks of life.
With over 1,000 frames to choose from at my eye lab, get the look that lets you shoot for the stars. Get two pairs of glasses that are out of this world, plus a free eye exam and a free lens upgrade for only $95. Book your eye exam today.
To all the Chevy Silverado owners out there, the adventurers.
With over 1,000 frames to choose from at my eye lab, find the look that lets your spirit out. Get two pairs of glasses that you want to buy for the free eye exam and a free lens upgrade for only $95. Book your eye exam today.
Some hotel accommodations for our contestants are provided by Wyndham Rewards. Scan the QR code to learn how to rent hotel stays, and how to make those last purchases when you get away.
Welcome back, you adventure lovers. How hard you work as a lifeguard, that's gotta be a great work.
Uh, yes, yes, of course, yeah, it's a little better than, you know, with tiki culture anyway. Yeah, I used to live in a lifeguard back in the day, but I'm in high school now, college grad, uh, yeah, with the green cell phone guy, I had that work up. I was kind of fine, I was just getting working with a bunch of my friends, and I, you know, this is everybody. I, uh, I, I basically went to do a lot of rescues, basically when, uh, they make sure all our lifeguards are on their work, right? And then they glue the whistle, uh, there's the ones on my plans, you have to, uh, get them. Uh, so there I am swimming, and there's a big hole in the water, so basically, uh, it should be able to hold it, or to hold the line. Uh, when the lifeguard's standing, we're going for that. I'm really interested, and I just kind of swim up there without any kind of support. I'm in a lot of trouble, so I see what I'm driving. So, it's, I'm, 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 I'm,
My name's Omi Hopper from Providence, Rhode Island, originally from Puerto Rico, and I'm an accidental social media chef. I have four boys and my husband, that makes five. I'm the only reason why we're ever late, and I'm okay with that. My love for food came from my abuelita. Cooking was a very big part of my family's life. I have no business being a social media chef. I don't know who gave me the green light. I decided to just record myself doing what I was doing, talking to my husband, and I'm going, babe, I think we just got 10,000 followers. I was not expecting it to grow so quickly. Having this level of reach has given me a purpose that I never could have imagined. Knowing that I'm making an impact, not just in my community, but for my people and for the generations to come is so rewarding. I'm not professionally trained, but I cook with love, and that's what I'm coming with.
Why is the pressure so much higher today?
We on next level chef, baby.
Winning dish is coming from the middle today.
Let's go, let's go.
Let's go, baby.
Let's go.
I got this. I know I have this.
Cassie, you're getting top dish, alright?
It's a lot of pressure because everyone is expecting it. I mean, who can cook a better Chinese dish than somebody who is Chinese?
Chris is coming for us hard.
Yeah, he really is.
Chris is coming for us hard. Don't give him any room.
I'm gonna send someone home today.
I'm coming for Team Ramsey today. They still have all six of their members there. I want to take someone off that team badly.
Someone's going home on the other teams.
Oh, my gosh. Chris is so crazy, and it's just like too much for me.
Let's go, guys.
It's absolutely insane.
Watch that door.
No one's going home from Team Blaze. Hello there, gorgeous. I want to make these other teams know that the basement can still make some serious magic happen down there.
I don't see soy sauce.
Yeah, I don't see it either.
I have the next level immunity pin. I want to hold on to this thing as long as possible.
I can't believe they're not giving us soy sauce.
I'm nervous because I don't cook Chinese. I'm the barbecue guy. That is what I do.
My name is Matt. I live in Bedford Lakes, New Jersey. During the week, I'm a high school teacher, and on weekends, I'm a social media cook. I have over 5 million followers across all platforms.
You're late. It's time to cook.
Grilling and barbecue sparked through tailgating. My dad, my brother, and I were all season ticket holders for the Eagles games. Everyone has their thing that gives them a sense of peace. For me, it's building a fire, and I'm cooking. You boys hungry?
Yes.
My wife and I went to middle school and high school together. Here we are, married, two beautiful boys. I'm doing this for them.
Medium rare.
Medium rare. Everything I've learned has been in my backyard, but at the end of the day, it comes down to flavor, and I know I have that.
Meat teacher out.
Hey, guys. How's it feel down there?
Feels good.
One of you's going home. Here we go, guys.
Aw, man.
Kevin, good luck. Good luck.
Alright, chefs. Alright, how we feeling?
Good.
Doing good? Alright, we're in the basement one more time?
Let's go. Focus today. Focus, focus, focus.
Let's go. Guys, came to win, right?
Yes. You want to stay in this kitchen?
Yeah.
What is it gonna take to stay in this kitchen?
Next level dish.
That's what I'm talking about.
Next level dish, baby.
Yeah, I got you. I am here as a conduit to help these people win. None of this is going to be handed to you. It's really about putting in the work.
One, two, three.
Stay in there. Come on, guys. Platform's on its way. Chinese, right? Layers of flavor. Let's go. 30 seconds. Go. Let's go. Freshness. Grab your ingredients. Grab what you need.
Okay. The platform drops, and it's just like pandemonium. Salmon, salmon, salmon. Salmon, anybody got salmon? I can't find any garlic, and with Chinese food, you need that.
10 seconds, guys.
Green onions. Anybody see green onions?
Where's some rice at?
I'm absolutely overwhelmed because it's so full that it's hard to focus your mind on the things that you could use.
Five, four, three. Grab salt, grab ingredients, please. Let's go, let's go, let's go.
Here we go, here we go, here we go, here we go.
I'm so excited right now.
And...
Go. Let's go, let's go, let's go. Alright, let's go, let's go. Look at those proteins. Oh, my goodness.
Ground pork on top.
I grab a pork chop. I grab vermicelli noodles. We're ready to rock over here.
Flick steak, lamb chop.
I see oyster sauce. I see a chili bean paste. I see a tomato paste. I see bamboo shoots. I see all of these ingredients that I know I want in a really good Chinese dish.
Five.
Want garlic?
Three, two, one.
What kind of protein's over there?
Grab, grab, grab.
By the time I'm done grabbing, that platform starts going down before I can even decide on a protein. And I'm just thinking, oh, my God.
You know when the light turns green, it's go time, Team Blaze. Let's go. 30 seconds. There it is. Okay, what do we got? What kind of classic Chinese dish maybe are we inspired by? Are we looking for noodles? Are we looking for rice?
I get really lucky and find squid, which I feel like is a gem that they missed out on up there.
Are we gonna grab a protein?
Proteins anywhere? I'm looking around the platform. I'm shouting, protein, protein, anyone? I don't see a protein anywhere.
Five seconds.
What can I make? What can I make? I grab frog legs, but I've never made a frog legs. Why come grabbing something I don't know how to make?
You can grab it until it goes. Grab it until it goes. There we go.
I don't have a protein.
Alright, I'm going no protein for this one.
You didn't get a protein?
No protein. I have basically none of the key things that I need to make a next level Chinese dish.
Okay. Cassie, protein-wise, what'd you get?
I did not get a protein.
You didn't get a protein?
Um...
What did you grab?
A lot of sauces.
Sauces?
Coming for you, guys.
I know you are.
What is that? Is that a whole fish? It is. There's a whole fish. Oh, my God, there's a whole fish. Are you kidding me? It's just like, hey, Chris, you know, I'm right up here. Come and get me.
There's a fish on the platform. Melvin, it's stuck in the corner. Can't really grab it. Oh, my God, there is an entire fish? Just laying there, perfect, ready for me to grab. There's a whole fish there.
If you can get it, it's on that floor. That's the rule. Vinny, hold her legs. Come on, Vinny.
Next Level Chef is sponsored by Sotictu. Find out if Sotictu is the treatment you've been looking for.
She found it. The feeling of finding the psoriasis treatment she's been looking for. Sotictu is the first of its kind once daily pill for moderate to severe plaque psoriasis for the chance at clear or almost clear skin. It's like the feeling of finding that outfit psoriasis tried to hide from you or finding your swimsuit is ready for prime time. Dad, once daily Sotictu is proven to get more people clearer skin than the leading pill. Don't take if you're allergic to Sotictu. Serious reactions can occur. Sotictu can lower your ability to fight infections, including TB. Serious infections, cancers, including lymphoma, muscle problems, and changes in certain labs have occurred. Tell your doctor if you have an infection, liver or kidney problems, hytridocerides, or had a vaccine or plan to. Sotictu is a tic-tu inhibitor. Tic-tu is part of the Jack family. It's not known if Sotictu has the same risks as Jack inhibitors. Find what plaque psoriasis has been hiding. Ask your dermatologist about Sotictu for clearer skin. So clearly you. Sotictu.
Ant-Man and the Wasp: Quantumania is the wildest Marvel movie yet.
I like Ants.
Thanks, buddy.
And it's now the number one movie in the world two weeks in a row.
You're huge.
I feel like I'm hugging Godzilla.
Ant-Man and the Wasp: Quantumania, rated PG-13, in theaters everywhere now.
My secret to beating stiff chicks? Secret dry spray. Just spray and stay fresh all day.
My turn.
Secret actually fights odor, and it's aluminum-free. Hours later, still fresh. Secret works.
Here we go.
Remember Mom is a kayak denier, so please don't bring it up.
Bring what, a kayak?
Excuse me? Do the research, Todd.
Listen to me. Kayak searches hundreds of travel sites to find you great deals on flights, cars, and hotels.
They're lying to you.
Who's they? Kayak?
Open your eyes.
Compare hundreds of travel sites at once. Kayak. Search one, and done.
Get Direct TV with a two-year price guarantee.
Here, speed is undeniable. Strength is not a debate. And destiny doesn't hide.
The NFL Combine continues all we get, only on NFL Network.
Yes.
Millions of viewers have been animal control hit. That thing must be worth more than the 16th chapter.
Buenas tardes. Convocado a las 7:13 PM. Good evening. This meeting of the Board of Education is now reconvened at 7:13 PM. Board members present in the antoium are trustee Cruz, trustee Guidry, trustee Hernandez, trustee Wade, and trustee Santos. At this time, we would normally hear from speakers to specific agenda items. However, no one registered to speak today. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special of the special meetings and the agenda review meeting held on February 2nd, 2023? Do I? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? We have a motion by trustees Santos and a second by trustee Guidry. Please vote. Please let the record reflect, we have been joined by trustee Allen.
Oh.
If...
It says up on apps.
Oh.
I need to re-mark as present.
Yeah. Okay. I think everyone needs to revote. Okay. Voting is closing. Motion passed. Six in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. We are now ready to consider a discussion and report item. Acceptance of board monitoring update presentation of goals one and two. Superintendent House, we are ready for your update. Colleagues, please hold your questions until the presentation is complete.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to invite Dr. Allison Maddening of our Research and Assessment Department to the podium. Dr. Maddening?
Alright, good evening. Thank you, Superintendent House, President Hernandez. This evening, we will be reviewing the end-of-year report for goals one and two using TAPER as our data source and briefly going over some information about interim assessments.
We need the screen flipped on the big screen.
Oh.
There we go.
Perfect. Alright, so just as a reminder, we have our glossary of terms at the beginning of the report. And moving into the end-of-year evaluation for goal one, our third grade star reading at or above grade level. Our target for June 2024 is 50%. So for our third grade star reading, we met that target, exceeded it by two points. We were at 46% in 2022, and our 2022 target was 44%. And just as a reminder, this group of third graders in 2022, they were first graders when we went home at the start of the pandemic. So moving to our data by student groups, we can see here that the green column, anything that's highlighted in green means that that student group met the target. And anything in the shaded pink, that student group did not meet the target for the 21-22 school year. It is important to note that we had increases over 2019 data in all student groups except for our Asian student group, which remained stagnant since 2019, and our EL student group declined by two points. We had double-digit gains over the 2021 data in all areas except for our white student population, which was just shy of double digits at nine. When we look at our third grade star math, our goal two data, we did not meet that indicator. We were at 40% of students, 40% of tests at or above grade level, when our 2022 target was 48%. And we can see here, again, anything shaded in pink, it did not meet the target for the 21-22 school year. We had two student groups that did meet the target for the 2022 school year. We had decreases in all areas since 2019 except for three student groups. And we did see those double-digit increases again over 2021 in all areas except for special ed, which was an increase of five percentage points from 2021. So just a tutorial about star interim assessments. We've been talking about those periodically throughout these presentations this school year. They are given once in the fall and once in the spring. All students were taking math and reading for the first interim assessment. It covers all the teacs for the entire school year. So even if you're taking the interim assessment in December and January, the teacs for the entire school year are covered. It does mirror STAR 2.0 with the new test format of test questions, and it is online. And 50% of the questions are adaptive based on the prior performance. So students take an initial set of questions, they answer those, and then the test moves them into various levels depending on their performance from the initial set of questions. So what do these scores tell us? The scores from interim assessments are presented as likelihood of achieving a performance level, not an absolute performance of an achievement level. They are reported when a student earns 50% or more likelihood, and then performance is normed based on prior year star scores. They're not reflective of STAR 2.0. So this year, there was a little bit of variability because we will have new standards come August of 2023 that are reflective of the new test format. This data is used in the classroom level. Teachers get that data quickly as soon as their students are assessed. They have access to that data, allowing immediate classroom action. Data is disaggregated by reporting category. You can see where classrooms have strengths, weaknesses, and then campuses can develop those instructional plans to target student needs or even see where students are already achieving in certain standards, even if it hasn't been taught yet. So just a brief snapshot of what a teacher sees. This is an item analysis report, and this allows a quick look for a teacher to identify misconceptions. So I'm gonna give an example of number five there, second from the bottom. 41% of students there, if you go all the way to the right, chose the answer A. So in the column of incorrect, partially correct answers, 41% chose A. So that teacher knows right there that they've got to address that misconception, whatever the distractor was for the question, that they need to go back and reteach that concept. Looking at this slide right here, again, the teachers can look at average percent correct along the bottom. Those are the standards. This is a third grade teacher here, and you've got the standards on the bottom. So you can see right there, you've got four standards that students are really outshining. And then you can see 3.7B, the lowest bar right there, probably is something that hasn't been introduced or taught yet. So again, without judgment, that's fine. It just hasn't been taught yet. But it's something for a teacher to know and understand where their students are for each of the standards. And then finally, the data for the student use. Students can see what they responded, what the correct answer was, and then they can actually see feedback on their answers and be able to go back and help in small group or with partner pairs how they can look at the data and achieve mastery the next time.
And then, you know, as you all are probably aware, this data that was presented today is not new data. It actually closes out the presentation for goals two and three. Excuse me, goal one and two. As we've already discussed, these data sets highlight a few of the major initiatives that have been launched this year that we really believe that will directly correlate to improvements in third grade, not only math, but also reading in terms of overall performance. This year, we, of course, launched, as you've heard Dr. Bird and myself talk about on several occasions, the high-quality instructional curriculum in both math and reading across HISD campuses, with both plans for implementation across all campuses, of course, these subjects, of course, by the end of the next school year. Now, ensuring that students have access to rigorous curriculum every day of instruction is key to growing academic performance. This particular year, of course, we launched also T-test appraisal systems, which is our new system for helping to grow and develop our teaching talent. Now, given the research and what it shows around the quality of the teacher in the classroom, we know that this is the most important factor in academic achievement. And we believe that this system will help us to provide the coaching and feedback necessary to improve academic outcomes for our kiddos. Now, another major part of our strategy towards meeting this goal is improving outcomes at our campuses that have historically underperformed as it relates to our state exam. Now, through our RISE initiative, as you guys have heard, we believe that we're implementing school-level systems and programs that will help to transform academic performance for our most underserved students. Now, given these schools serve predominantly economically disadvantaged students from Hispanic and African-American backgrounds, the subgroups which have the capacity really to grow the most academically, we believe that the RISE initiative will play a major role in improving our overall progress towards goals. With that being said, I will turn this over to Dr. Watts to speak a little bit about the RISE transformation initiative and how it aligns to both goals one and two. Dr. Watts?
Thank you, Superintendent House, President Hernandez, and the board. I'm excited this evening to be able to follow up on the progress measure goals one and two to talk specifically about how the RISE transformation schools, the inputs that we are putting into the RISE transformation schools in order to reach that board goal. So again, my presentation will focus on some of the things that we're doing, some of the early indicators that we are measuring that are in alignment to that specific board goal. Here on this particular slide, you can see the subcommitments or initiatives that we believe are foundational to the RISE transformation schools. You'll see that foundational is the district conditions for bold transformation. In other words, the district offices have to be working in alignment and support of these schools. We have to measure what is being done, replicate and codify those things across other schools that need that support. The responsiveness to those schools has to be increased so that those schools can solve their most pressing challenges. They can't wait. They need our time and attention immediately. And then we have to establish systems and structures so that these particular schools, as they improve, we can replicate those practices across other schools, and it's not just dependent on a principal or a group of teachers because, as you know, those people are in and out of schools at any particular time. Excited to be able to partner with the talent department on the initiative around investing in and building talent. That really does focus on recruiting, incentivizing, developing, and retaining our best principals and best teachers in these schools. And then finally, the expanded learning opportunities are important for our students. Many of their academic deficiencies relate specifically to the fact that they don't have opportunities, exposure, to college and career readiness. They don't have the appropriate social-emotional supports at times. So the transformation initiative is working to ensure that those inputs are... Sorry. So that students are getting what they need to make appropriate progress around goals one and two. There is direct alignment to board goals as it relates to the RISE transformation school effort. You can see across the board, investing and building talent and expanding learning opportunities aligns with each of the board goals, reading, math, college and career readiness, as well as special ed. And we really see the district conditions for bold change as being an enabling condition. Again, it is important just to have that foundation in place so that we can produce the desired outcomes. Additionally, it's also aligned to constraint one as that constraint deals specifically with recruiting and employing strong teachers. On this slide, you can see a list of the 24 RISE transformation schools. As a reminder, these schools were selected based on a very set and specific criteria. Schools that were Fs in 2019 and schools that were Ds and Fs on a recurring basis. We wanted to intervene quickly in those that in 2019 seemed to be getting off track. And obviously, we needed to intervene in those schools that were experiencing year-over-year failure. Schools that you see highlighted with the asterisks, those indicate our ACE campuses, and that is a part of the state initiative, Accelerating Campus Excellence. And it has some specific criteria and inputs that go with it that advance these schools in the right direction. We do have a theory of action as it relates to our transformation efforts. You can see that in visual form, in the picture to the left and to the right. You can see basically that stated in a verbal way. If we bolster student readiness to learn, and we define readiness to learn as those social and circumstantial things that sometimes inhibit students from being essentially ready to learn, things that sometimes will impact attendance or behavioral things that prevent a student from being able to focus and really maximize time in class. So if we bolster their readiness to learn and we invest in high-quality talent and we ensure that students have exposure to high-quality instructional materials and research-based strategies, as well as galvanizing or regalvanizing our parents and community while supporting systems and structures are in place, we believe we can dramatically improve student achievement in our lowest-performing schools in reading and math. Some of the key inputs and early impact that we're seeing to date are as followed. On our ACE campuses, they receive some very specific, highly responsive inputs. There was a rigorous reapplication and selection process for leaders and teachers. Those individual campuses, there are strong financial incentives to attract and retain teachers. I partnered with the academics department to have an intense level of high-quality curriculum materials and support. All of those schools are supported in a more intense way from the academics department. Those particular schools are also getting, those students get after-school programming as well as transportation home in the evenings and an evening meal. And that's a game changer for kids, particularly those kids that may go home to a home without a parent or home without structured activities and supervision. And then our RISE campuses also receive additional staffing allocations to support their work. As it relates to student readiness to learn, just want to dig a little bit deeper into some key inputs as it relates to that. We partner with each of the organizations that you see here on the screen, and we're beginning to see some early indication that we're getting traction. In 18 of the 24 campuses, about 24%, we're seeing an increase in attendance in comparison to last year. And at the three ACE campuses, we are seeing a 6% reduction in out-of-school suspensions. So having these social-emotional supports in place are helping our kids, again, have a readiness to learn because they're getting their needs met. In addition to that, I'm excited to report that we have a very robust effort to provide the just-in-time support to our teachers and our school leaders. We are partnering very strongly with our academics office, the schools office, as well as a partnership with AUSL to ensure that our principals and teachers are getting the professional development they need. Our surveys around professional development and coaching on a Likert scale of 1 to 5, all of the indicators so far are that teachers and leaders speak favorably about the professional development that they're getting, and they feel like it's supporting them in their efforts to improve student achievement. Over my last three slides... Over my last three slides, we spent a lot of time talking about Eureka Math implementation, high quality instructional materials. There's a concerted effort to measure both quantitatively and qualitatively the impacts that that's having on our campuses. At beginning of year and middle of year, our walkthrough data yielded that 100% of RISE third grade math classrooms were observed using Eureka Math to some extent. So the good news is that all of our teachers in third grade are to some degree leveraging the materials that they have been given to expose students to high quality tasks and on grade level task. And 50% of those classrooms are actually being seen at implementing at a very high level, which means a routine level. You can tell the teacher is using them on a regular basis, and the benefits are seen in student engagement and the outcomes that we're seeing on Renaissance. The last couple of slides are just early impact slides as it relates to what we're seeing as a result of implementation of high quality instructional materials. You can see here, based on our Renaissance performance metrics, we are seeing in math that from beginning of the year to middle of the year, there was about a 9% increase in the percentage of third graders who were at or above benchmarks. So that 9% increase. And if you're looking back to 21, 22, you can see at midyear last year, we were performing right about 54. So I'm not touting this as a success. This is simply a early indication that things are moving in the right direction. We are getting traction. And I do realize that in order to close the achievement gap, we have to accelerate the growth that we're seeing in these schools. So they can't just keep pace. They actually have to go faster than the pace of our other students. And then while we do not have high quality instructional materials in reading, we are also measuring the progress of our students just as closely. As you can see here, from beginning of year to middle of the year on our Renaissance performance metric, there is an increase, 37% to 42%. And if you compare that to last year, middle of the year, again, we are seeing some positive trends as it relates to student performance. That concludes my presentation. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you, Dr. Watts. President Hernandez, we'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. We are now ready for questions or comments from trustees. We will do two rounds of two minutes each. If an additional round is desired, that can be done with a motion second and board vote. Trustee Santos?
Thank you, President Hernandez, Superintendent House, for the presentation. I'd like to go to page 10. Dr. Mattney, I believe the, let's see. Okay, so given once in the fall, once in the spring, it covers all TEACs for the entire school year at once. Why give them all, at the start, that's all of the TEACs at once when in the fall, they've not, we've not taught all the TEACs? Isn't there a scope and sequence?
So the the initial answer to that is because this is a T E A interim assessment, and that's what they offer. So this, so we're following what they have for us. But there is, and Dr. Byrd may want to chime in, but there, from the assessment side, there is value instructionally and to having, so if you've got students that are already mastering, even if it hasn't been taught yet, then you know how to differentiate up from that standpoint. And then, and so it does provide you some data. But the the base answer is because that's what is offered at beginning of year and at the the end of year interim.
Okay, so then my following question, two questions is, does Eureka and Carnegie, does the curriculum account for this? So you said that there's immediate feedback, so, and you can immediately take into action. Does the curriculum immediately take into effect? Like what?
Dr. Byrd?
So this is the T E A interim assessment. That's different than what they would get in the curriculum. So this is going to tell the teacher, you need, you need to, the student is not performing at whatever, this TEAC. So then they could go back into the curriculum and then, you know, when they, because the curriculum is designed to spiral, to introduce students to TEACs multiple times a year. So if it's, you know, whatever, the TEAC is addition of fractions or whatever, if that's the area that the student needs to focus on, the teacher would have that information from this interim so know that when they hit that again, they need to, this group of students needs more.
So the standardized Eureka and, like, if there's a scope and sequence, you're supposed to teach this, this day, da, da, da. How are you accounting for the reteaching if there is like a very lockstep implementation of this?
So the, so, you know, we say give or take a week. Teachers could get off, you know, the pace of a week because, but the curriculum is designed to repeat TEACs multiple times. So if a student doesn't master it the first time, that doesn't mean they have to stop the whole class and teach that one TEAC over, because they're going to see it multiple times throughout the year.
Right. But if you make a student feel like a failure, which this, if you haven't taught the TEACs by this, the, it's impossible to teach all of the TEACs by fall, it is incredibly difficult to motivate them to want to continue to learn. How are we accounting for that?
This data is really for teacher use. It's not, it's not actually, I don't think we even share it with students. It's, this is for the teacher to see. And we do have to tell the teacher, you know, we have to, our coaches go in and look at the data reports with them and say, like, you don't have to worry that your students didn't master these TEACs, you haven't taught them yet. This is, if some of them may have, but most of your class didn't, that's okay because you haven't taught any of this yet. This is giving you a prediction. If you took the STAR test today, what's the likelihood you would pass? And at the beginning there, we wouldn't expect.
Right. So you give this in the fall, and then you give this again in the spring, right before the the STAR test again. So you really don't have an opportunity to go back and reteach anything that they could, that they are potentially weakened.
Yeah, you do. Because they're giving the, the new interim window is open now, right? Isn't it open?
It's not open now. It's about to be open. There, there's about a month in between. The timing is set, the T E A sets the windows to allow for that additional time of reteach before the actual STAR assessment's given.
But in addition, in between the interim, in between the first interim and the second interim, there's all this instruction that takes place. There are interim assessments within the curriculum product that the teacher would use for their own, you know, their own planning. So this is just one, this is a, you know, this is a snapshot of performance.
Right. I just want to caution you all that Tellpass, the AP tests, all the tests that are given in between, there is no time. If you want to hear feedback from the teachers that I have, I, that this is not the best use of instructional time. So I'd caution, I don't want to say caution, I'd like to suggest that, you know, maybe we take a, a look at the instructional time and actually maximize it. Thank you.
Trustee Diggard?
Thank you. My first question is, can the, Mr. Superintendent, can you modify the monitoring calendar so we can monitor these goals in August or September at the beginning of the year instead of close to the end of the year?
We do, at the local level, have the ability to, to make modifications to the, the calendar. I don't know that I would recommend doing it now, but it is something for the future.
For next, for us to monitor these two goals for the, for 2023, that we monitor them, we bring to us an adjustment to the monitoring calendar so we can monitor them in August or September of 2023?
We'll take a look at it, see what pros and cons are there, and, and bring it back to, to the board to, to take a look at.
For goal one, which populations of students did not meet the target for their group and why?
I'm sorry, Trustee Diggard, would you repeat your question? Goal one?
Why, yeah. Which populations of students did not meet the target for their group and why?
So that here are the population, the, for goal one specifically, for reading, the groups of students that did not meet it are Hispanic, Asian, and are currently identified English learners. They did not meet the target. You can see here, like, for example, Hispanic was 41, the target was 42, so slightly under. The why can vary among campuses even.
Mr. Superintendent, what are you doing differently for these populations to get different results this year?
Dr. Byrd, will you share some of the adjustments that are being made in reference to the?
Sure. So that is why we have those other assessments, the interim assessments, the curriculum formative assessments, so that teachers can adjust their pacing and adjust what their, what interventions they are providing for students based on, you know, current real time data. So they get, teachers can access which groups are doing well, which groups are not doing well in their classroom. And that really is the purpose of all these, not this, all the assessments that we, the interim assessment, as well as the curriculum assessment, those are really teacher, those per teacher data, so that they can make adjustments to instruction to improve outcomes.
Can, can I just add too that it's cross-functional and cross-departmental? So even in Wednesday's leadership meeting, Jeremy's team with talent, we took a deep dive into T test, the teacher evaluation rubric. So when you're thinking about some of these outcomes, you also have to look at teacher performance. So principals were able to look at the feedback that they're giving principals. Is that yielding an impact so we can triangulate this data with the way teachers are getting evaluated and coached? So I'd say that's another way. In January, we worked with all of our principals to look at various data sources and to come up with a plan of action for how they might rearrange time, people, and money from January until the end of the year to be able to, where there are deficiencies in the data, to be able to, you know, have a plan moving forward for the second half of the year.
And I appreciate that because I was going to get to my question about high quality instructional time, right? It's like the PD only matters if they have the person getting PD. How are you using this data to adjust budget recommendations? For example, on the first page of the strategic plan, you say you're investing in the things that matter most. So how is that, what is that going to look like?
I can address that potentially. So we're actually currently in that cycle of work. We just had our principals identify their goals related to the, the board goals in a real specific and nuanced to their individual campuses. Next week, when they get their budget allocation sheets, we're going to actually start with the goal top of mind. What are your priorities and big rocks that will help you hit your goal? And then how will you now take your budget and align it to those goals? Not just budget though, time, people, and money. It's all three of those things together. How will you align time, people, and money next year to match your goals? So, and that's a cycle that I want to continue year over year with principals.
Actually, it's really just money because money is what allows you to access time and talent.
Yes.
Yeah. But I hear what you're, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate it. So which ESAR investments have demonstrated results and which haven't?
Oh, goodness.
Dr. Byrd, you want to start? McSaid? Sure. So which ESAR, you said, which ESAR investments have demonstrated? Yep. So I, I think we've spent a great deal of ESAR dollars on tutoring, opportunities for small group instruction for teachers. Those, you know, are yielding results and will continue to, that helps accelerate the learning and close some gaps for students who've been, who, you know, had some gaps from the, not only the pandemic, but just had gaps in general. That's the, the largest portion of our ESAR dollars that we've invested in academics are tutoring and then some intervention products. And we're looking at those intervention products and, and really aligning the products that we're making available for next year based upon data that we're gathering this year for what groups of students are doing well and what groups of students are, and which ones are not meeting the mark. So we are evaluating that constantly and making decisions next year, how we're going to spend ESAR dollars next year based upon some data that we're getting back.
So am I hearing correctly then that you are looking at this data to adjust your investments of the third year of ESAR dollars?
Correct.
I appreciate hearing that. On the strategic plan update slides, the, the subcommitments, what things, so these are just for the RISE campuses? So what about our struggling students who aren't at RISE campuses?
So I'm glad you asked that question because as I've talked a little bit about this earlier in the week with cabinet, none of the things that you see on this list are, should be isolated just to RISE campuses. These are things that we should be doing across every campus in H I S D. The difference is the level of intensity. So, you know, a school may get some support from Sean's team in academics, but the RISE school, the level of intensity, the frequency of visits, the investment from other departments is just deeper. And so that's part of the answer. The other side of that is in each of the school's offices, whether it's a RISE school or not, we are tiering schools and each school officer, each assistant superintendent, we're learning from some of this work, but they're also providing more intense support to the schools within their portfolio of schools that need the additional support too.
Okay. And then this, you know, increasing investment, those are the big rocks aligning, but yeah, okay. How are you monitoring the implementation and impact of these strategies you've listed here?
So those were the leading indicators that I spoke to earlier. We look weekly at vacancy levels at each of these schools. We look weekly at attendance. We look weekly at discipline. Anytime there's a professional development, we're constantly not only getting principal or teacher perception, but we want to go walk the campus to see if the impact is happening in the classroom. So there are various measures and ways in which we're trying to monitor these things. Again, because we need to be able to pivot when we're not seeing a return on investment and not waiting till the progress measure comes to you.
And if I may add, Dr. Watts, one of the additional projects or initiatives that we're spearheading around progress monitoring actually is a partnership with McKinsey, the consulting firm. We've been working with them over the past six months through, to actually become more sophisticated around what we're monitoring, how we're monitoring, the dashboards that are being built out. So that work is already happening, but really over the past six months, we've been doubling down on that. In fact, just a couple of weeks ago, we brought in all of the tier leaders, the superintendent came in, sat down with them to find areas of intersection and collaboration between different departments. And we're already seeing even in our, in our, in our cabinet reporting mechanisms, every cabinet meeting, we actually start off by looking at this, aligning it all to the board goals, looking at the progress measures, reporting out, finding problems of practice, and working collaboratively. Because to Dr. Watts's point, all of these areas are really intertwined, and it can't just be academics doing one thing in isolation because academics relies on the human capital. It relies on principals understanding what's happening and aligns with the resources need to be put together. So we're really taking a really collaborative approach, working with McKinsey to become more efficient in how we go about doing this progress monitoring.
Thank you. And then on, there aren't page numbers, there's this little chart of board goal and constraint alignment. I don't really understand these subcommitments, like, yes, I'm, oh, these subcommitments are the previous page and, okay. Never mind them. All right, I'm good. Thank you.
Trustee Cruz?
Thank you. Okay, so looking at slide four. I'm really encouraged that we grew 14 percentage points in one year. Granted, we started very far behind because of the pandemic. That's no surprise. And I hope that we can continue that amount of growth between this year and next year, especially given that our students, you know, if we actually meet our five year target, only half of our students will actually be able to read on, read on grade level. So I hope to continue to see this amount of growth over the course of a next year. So looking at the superintendent's responses, and this is on reading, so I want to make sure I understand, or where did I see that? The implementation of the high quality instructional materials is, it started this year, correct?
It's in, for reading, it's in, it's on six campuses. Amplify Texas is in six campuses. Next year, we'll go to 40, which are the same 40 that are implementing Eureka Math right now.
So we definitely can't attribute high quality instructional materials to a 14-point jump on reading.
No, but what you can, some of what you can attribute to is that the district has been engaged in systematic phonics instruction in early grades for the last couple of years, and that I think is helpful. And the science of teaching reading, the reading academies that teachers have been engaged with also are probably some, there's probably some correlation to that.
So, Mr. House, would you, like, how confident are you that this, this amount of growth will continue because of the phonics and because of the, the reading academies?
We, we think they're research-based best practices, and we want to continue them. We think we're yielding results because of these things as well as other supports, and we expect that we'll see continued growth of this banner.
Okay, thank you. And I look forward to seeing that, and I hope that when the team of 10 revisits our goals next year, that we really reach high for our students and have highest expectations. Looking at slide six, so Looking at slide six, so it looks like even though the, some of the student groups didn't meet the target, there was still quite a bit of a jump, right, in terms of achievement, which is encouraging. What is, and I'm trying to, to figure this out, let me just finish my, my statement if that's okay. When I looked at the, the accountability report in August, and it had school by school data, there were some schools that in domain one in achievement, which is what we're looking at in the school, went forward quite a bit. And there were other schools that went backward quite a bit. And we look at it as an aggregate, it doesn't tell that story. So just wondering how to reconcile that, like, are y'all seeing the same thing and maybe explain why?
Is that a statement that you indicated or is that a question?
It's a question.
Okay. All right. Dr. Matty?
Absolutely. So this is only third grade reading. In the accountability for domain one for an elementary school, it's third, fourth, fifth, reading and math, plus fifth grade science, all combined.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Trustee Wade?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Trustee Hernandez, I have a question about 26 and 27 slides. And my question is, because there's, there are very little, seems to be very little difference between the pilot and non-pilot example. So what confidence do you have in this high quality instructional material when the pilot and, and the non-pilot are still below and still, and not that, not that different?
Yes, thank you for the question. So I think a couple of things. One is the first year of implementation, so teachers are getting used to that. They're getting used to, they're getting in the rhythm of, of implementing this and they're learning a new curriculum. And two, the schools, the schools in RISE were typically, they have traditionally underperforming, they're traditionally underperforming schools. So they had, the distance they have to go is greater in the first place. So you do have to account for that in the, at the outset of the data. So I think that, I, I believe, and there's national data that supports that schools that continue implementing these products, they do see gains over time. But you, you know, it does take, sometimes there is an implementation dip the first year. Some schools, they will still see increases in achievement, even, even for the first year, but it, you know, it could take time for, for other schools. So it's a matter of staying the course.
I don't see anyone else in the queue for round one. So I will go, we saw an 11% increase in math and reading and TAPER report. Do we expect that this to repeat itself for the 2022, 2023 school year? Why or why not?
Definitely the hope and expectation is to, again, as we've discussed, take a close look at what's working and, and what practices that we are, are focused on. I think Dr. Watts said it clearly, these are not just practices that we want to focus on for, for RISE, but these are practices that are really good for all schools. So we, we definitely want to continue with these practices with the expectation they'll, they'll yield additional results in RISE schools and non-RISE schools.
Okay, do we, do we think that that will be the case for, across other grade levels too and not just third grade?
That's, that's the hope.
My other question was about the high instructional materials. I see that we have a high instructional materials for math and that there's a whole chart about the impact of it, but I don't see that for reading. Are we saying that Renaissance performance, Renaissance is not a high quality instructional material?
Well, Renaissance is the instrument we're using to measure it. So the district curriculum is, we have Amplify in six campuses, then we have the regular district curriculum. I think, you know, you see, if you go to that reading slide, you see, you do see some improvements in reading, even though there's not necessarily the implementation of HQIM yet, but in part because you have kids that are in-person instruction, they're closing gaps from when they were younger students in the pandemic and trying to learn how to read on a computer screen. So you're going to, I think it's almost, it's, makes sense that you would see acceleration in reading even without the implementation of a new curriculum product.
So are we not tracking Amplify like we are tracking Eureka and Carnegie?
We are, but it's only in six campuses and they're not all RISE. Yeah. Next year, we'll have more data on that.
And the slide with high quality math materials, you stated that there's 50% of teachers using Eureka and, Eureka, I guess?
Yeah.
With fidelity. So will the district be comparing the two data sets of teachers, those who are using Eureka with fidelity and those who are not?
Yeah, so let's, let me just talk about that slide for just a second. So all of them are using it, in all the classrooms we observe, they're using it, some with better fidelity than others. And so what, what we use that data for is to, it's really for us to see, like, we need to train, we need to support some teachers differently in using the materials. So, and this is again a snapshot, we go in three times a year and look, so it's, this is a day, this is a slice of time. That doesn't mean that on the next day, that teacher might be more, you know, they might, because they're doing, they're constantly meeting MPLC groups, they're constantly receiving coaching from that. So I, it doesn't, I think that is, when you read that statistic, it's a little misleading because it doesn't mean they're not, it's just by the rubric that we have, which is a very high bar to get to skillful fidelity. There are people that are doing quite well, they're just not, they don't meet the high bar of skillful fidelity. So that means we just need to do more work with them to, to make sure that, that they're meeting those goals.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems like that would be something that would be compared to see if, if it's Eureka making a difference or something else. And then you also, Dr. Matty, you mentioned, I believe it was you, there's three AIC campuses, there's 6% decrease in behavior. Or Dr. Watts, can you just speak a little bit more about that and what you think is the reason for that?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. As it was listed on the slide, we're providing lots of inputs to those schools. I think if you go back a couple of more, up forward. Different partnerships, different work with counselors, social workers, wraparound specialists, all of those things attribute to a decrease. I will say that in September, I was also able to launch a professional development with our RISE principals around putting appropriate structures and systems and expectations in place, practicing those with teachers, the rollout being done in an exemplary way so that everybody could be singing from the same page and teachers wouldn't have varying levels of understanding around expectations for students. I think it's a combination of all of those things that are yielding improvement in those schools.
Thank you. I love to see that and hopefully that gets replicated throughout the district. We are now in round two. Trustee Cruz.
Okay, so I just wanted a little bit of more clarity and explanation on the STAR interim assessment. The examples you shared are very granular at the teacher level. So is this also data that y'all are using at the district level?
We are just to know where we need to add additional supports. So like from the student assessment side, our, our data-driven instructional specialists go out with the curriculum implementation coaches so we know where to go and have those conversations if we see large trends over, over the course of a campus. And then we really are working and training them on the use of these, since this, this was the first time that we took this TEA interim assessment. So we went out and made sure that campus staff knew what even they have access to, what are they looking at, what are they, so really it was about the usage and, and being able to respond to these things, but I know that y'all have used it in a little bit different way.
My, my hope is that this data is used by teachers to improve their instructional practice. That's really what this is for. This does, yes, this gives you a snapshot of where kids are. The second one, the one that's about to be taken, will be much closer approximation because they've covered more material, but this is really for teachers. I mean, we, yes, we look for big picture trends, but this, we're not looking at this granular, in a granular way because it's really for the schools and the teachers to, to use.
So do we know if teachers are using this data?
And so in their PLC, there are protocols for their PLC meetings that they look, this, this is one data point, they use multiple data points to look at.
Okay. I just, I'm like, I am, I think it's no surprise I'm data-driven, I like to see how our students are doing, but I am concerned that, you know, we took away assessments and then we just added other ones, like, how do we balance that to make sure we're not over assessing our, our students?
And also, this is an opportunity for, this, especially this year, there's an opportunity for students to see the STAR 2.0-like items. It was kind of a practice opportunity for them to see that. So that's another reason that we wanted to shift to this, this assessment this year.
So thank you for that. And then my last question, and Chief Watts, you brought this up, you know, you were saying that this shouldn't be done in isolation, right, just at RISE campuses, and we know that certain groups of students in schools need more intensity. How can we scale this, you know, to other campuses? Because obviously we know we have groups of students with high need across our district. So I'm just curious what, what that could look like. And obviously that, I know that requires more capital, right? More people.
A strong PLC with the assistant superintendents, school support officers, and principals, because the vision is that they are learning from one another and not working in isolation. And that's one of the things that I think I have been successful at, it would be very hard to measure that. But we have sessions at school sites where there are cross, even if the SSO was assigned to that school, maybe the assistant soup and the SSO from another school is with them so that they are learning and there's cross pollination of ideas that are always happening. When we meet together, we even meet with the academics department, again, to create a coherent way and a cross collaborative way to learn from one another to best serve our schools. It's not a perfect science. It's all messy, but there are efforts to learn what is working and codify that so that it can be replicated. Because I do not believe that we should be relying on a turnaround principal that might be at a school for a year or two, and then when that principal leaves, another principal comes, and then we're turning around the school again. So we have to, we have to codify and replicate best practices so that they are a part of the system of HISD.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And I do have, I did say one more question, but, so looking at the Q and A and the investments that are being made, and obviously this, this takes more investment, right, and, and our students need that. How long will RISE campuses have these investments and then how do we sustain that in the long term?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question because that's one that we're, we're beginning to dive into. So my commitment to those schools is that it would be a minimum of three years. So the first two years is to, to see if a school can achieve desired outcomes two years in a row. The third year would be an opportunity to begin to pull back on the resources to see if they can sustain with some things missing from the equation around supports. And then in that, if, if a school proves over three consecutive years that it is baked into the DNA of the way the school operates, the best practices, the use of curriculum, the master schedule, if they can prove over three years, then I would feel confident about saying that they're no longer a RISE school, but at a minimum three years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we will now move to accept the presentation given to us. May I have a motion? Is there a second? We have a motion by trustee Guidry and a second by trustee Allen. Voting is closing. Motion passed. Eight in favor, zero abstention, and zero opposed. Next, we will address another discussion and report item. Acceptance of presentation of Equity Project research findings. Superintendent House, you have the floor.
Thank you. And of course, of course, this presentation has been a, a week or so in the, in the coming, and we appreciate you, you making it back in, in one piece. We know there were some unfortunate this past week. So we're going to turn it over to, to Dr. Strobe and, and, and our friends at HERC. We appreciate the hard work that you guys have focused on, to have an informative opportunity for HISD to, to really learn from and build on as a part of this strategic plan. Dr. Strobe?
Thank you. And by the way, please feel free to call me Corey. I prefer that, so it's either way. So my name is Corey Strom, I'm the associate director of HISD Research with the Houston Education Research Consortium, which is a research center at the Kinder Institute for Urban Research at Rice University. Today, I'm going to talk to you, as Superintendent House was suggesting, about a multi-year project that we've been working on in close collaboration with HISD around a variety of issues of equity. All right, so before I get into that, I just wanted, I think most of you or some of you are familiar with, somewhat familiar with what HERC does, but for those of you that are less familiar, I wanted to just give you a little bit of an idea of what we do and how we do it, and sort of why I'm here talking to you now. So HERC is what's called a research practice partnership. The way we like to explain it is sort of we're a group of researchers that prefer not to do research in a more traditional way. So by traditional way, I mean we pick a topic, topic that we're interested in, we do research on that topic, we write a journal article, and it sits on a shelf in an academic journal, and then that's probably about it, right? We prefer to work very close, in very close collaboration with HISD, a variety of departments in HISD, HISD leadership, to try, to try our best to do research that is timely and relevant to the district and hopefully provide actionable, actionable research, actionable findings that they can actually use to do their jobs better. That's our goal. HERC's been around since 2011, and our, when we first started out, our only, our first partner, and our only partner at the time was HISD, and over the last few years, we've been scaling up regionally, and so now we work with 11 Houston-area school districts. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions at the end about how we do our work with the district, but one thing I just wanted to say before we dig into the, the Equity Project is that all the research that we do on behalf of the district or in collaboration with the district is entirely free. Because that's by design, we never charge for it. So as I mentioned, I'm here to talk a little bit about the Equity Project. As I said, this is a multi-year project. We worked with a variety of departments in HISD. In total, I think it, it spans about 15, 16, 17 actual individual research studies over the last few years. When we were first, when we were first in early communications with HISD about doing this project, we, it became very clear that one of the things that, that was of primary interest to the district and a lot of folks that we ended up working with was around issues of equity, right? How are, you know, depending on where you live or who you are as a student or what campus you go to, it might predict what kind of resources you have available to you or what's easy for you to access. So one of the things, so that's really the central focus of this project, is try to help the district to understand where, you know, where they're doing well, and then also where, you know, there's potentially room for growth. In the interest of time, I'm going to skip past that one, I don't think it's very relevant. So one of the things that I just wanted, before we get into the findings, I wanted to mention is that in early value, in, in early discussions with HISD, one of the things that we really wanted to talk about is come up with a series of guiding questions for, that would sort of inform all the research projects that are part of the Equity Project. So these are up here on the slides now. I won't read through them, but you can kind of get a sense of what we're looking at. Essentially, what we're focusing on is equity and access to resources, what's the impact of any sort of inequality that exists around resources on student outcomes, and then what can be done to sort of address any of those, any of that inequality. So just to give you a sense of the types of, the broad topics that we covered, again, as I said, it's in total about 15 or 16 individual research studies. So we focused on anywhere from human capital to access to academic programming or extracurricular programming, student support, whether that's wraparound services or beyond, access to technology resources on your campus, facilities, particularly as it pertains to transportation, as well as COVID-related questions, particularly COVID-related enrollment declines. So there's a few additional projects that most of the research that I'm going to present today are available on our website. So if you want to dig in a little bit more deeper about any of these topics, you can go to our website and all. you can go to our website, and all of these are available. There's a few projects that are still wrapping up, and they'll be available to look at in the next couple of months. One that might be of particular interest is the COVID-related enrollment declines, which is not done yet. That's coming soon. We have another project on special ed that will be coming soon. And then another project on summer school, and that's how it relates to credit recovery and retention. So those are some ongoing projects that will be, excuse me, that will be done shortly. So now digging into the findings, again, these are going to be very high-level takeaways. There's a ton of research that this project represents. So to the extent you have any additional questions, I'll do my best to answer them at the end. Of course, you can always submit referrals, and then we're happy to respond as needed. The results are, we broke the results up into kind of two broad categories. Bright spots, areas where the district is doing well in terms of equity. And then the second section will be around areas that I think that they could build on. So the first thing that I wanted to talk about as it relates to bright spots is that students who are economically disadvantaged in the district generally have greater access to a variety of resources than students that are not economically disadvantaged. Just to give you three examples here, we have economically disadvantaged students have more access to pre-K, meaning that they tend to have pre-K programs on their campuses or live near a pre-K program that they have access to. They're also more likely to have technology resources on their campuses. And by technology resources, I'm talking about electronic devices such as tablets. I'm talking about dedicated computer labs as well as dedicated IT staff. And then the third, the third thing that I wanted to highlight was access to health clinics. And when I'm saying health clinics, I don't mean school nurses. I mean things like actual, like, you know, Baylor College of Medicine or provides healthcare services on a few campuses, and there's also a few other providers. So they tend to have higher access to those resources as well. Another bright spot for the district is that the alignment between student characteristics and teacher characteristics is generally pretty high. There's a fairly large body of literature that suggests, in particular, black and Hispanic students that are taught by black and Hispanic teachers have a lot of beneficial outcomes. And so just, if you look at the figure here, this is just an example for black students and black teachers. So along the X-axis, you have the percentage of black students on a campus. And along the Y-axis, you have the percentage of black teachers on a campus. The dots represent actual campuses. And as you can see, as the proportion of black students increases on a campus, the proportion of black teachers also increases on that campus. This is, the same holds true for Hispanic and Asian students, by the way. I'm just giving you an example using black students. So another bright spot for the district was that the Barbara Jordan Career Center seems to provide a lot of access to CTE coursework and pathways for students, particularly students in traditionally underserved neighborhoods, meaning low-income or low-ICS neighborhoods. So if you look at the map, this is, there's a lot to unpack here, so we'll spend just a second, I'll spend just a second talking about it. So this is just one example of access to CTE coursework using the business and finance pathway as an example. We have, we've done this same analysis for all of the CTE pathways. Those are also all available on our website. I'm just using business and finance as an example. So the shading, the gray shading represents the level of sort of economic disadvantage in the neighborhood. The circles are campuses. The yellow circles are campuses where students have access to business and finance CTE coursework. The black circles are campuses where students don't have access or have very little access. The black triangle towards the top with the blue arrow pointing at it, that's the Barbara Jordan Career Center. And so really, what we found in these, in some of these analyses is that for students in that northern part of the district, even in particularly economically disadvantaged neighborhoods, they have a lot of access to these, to this CTE pathway. This holds true across a variety, across all the pathways. And something that I'll come back to a little bit later is that if you notice in the sort of red boxes towards the south, you have clusters of economically disadvantaged neighborhoods, but there's a lot of black dots, right? Because these students just don't have access to these CTE pathways. And this is a path, again, as I said, I'll come back to this in a minute. One implication here could be that there might be, there might be an opportunity to cite another career center in the southern part of the district. I know that's easier said than done, but just, just from my perspective, it seems like there's a need down there. Okay, so now, just to talk about a few areas that the district can build on. Sorry, I didn't realize there was animation here. I'm just going to kick all these on there. Okay, so the first thing that we really wanted to highlight was that place matters in HISD a lot, meaning where you live or where you go to school has, is a pretty strong predictor of your access to some resources. Not all of them, but some of them. So here's just a few examples. So starting at the top, and we'll just go through these one at a time. So low-ICS neighborhoods, particularly those in the south and eastern part of HISD, tend to be STEM deserts. And what we mean by STEM deserts is that students in those neighborhoods, the campuses that they tend, that they tend to enroll in in those neighborhoods have few, tend to have relatively few CTE course offerings. And this is particularly the case among high schools and CTE courses that are associated with the STEM endorsement pathway. So another thing that we did is we looked a little bit at transportation policy and how that interacts with how students are choosing schools, right? We know that HISD has quite a lot of choice available to students. And one of the things we found, and this is not surprising, this is very consistent with the broader literature, is that the further a student lives from their zone school, the less likely they were to attend that school, despite the fact that they have transportation provided if they live more than two miles away. And so one implication of this finding might be that there's a little bit of a misalignment in terms of the, the sort of preferences of parents and maybe the size or distribution of attendants in the district. I understand that's a very difficult problem to solve, but again, this was just something that we wanted to highlight. Third, we found that students in the southern part of the district just have less access to CTE programs, right? This is circling back around to that map that we looked at. This holds true across a variety of CTE pathways. It's not just business and finance, you know, to give you just a couple more examples, architecture and construction, as well as human services tended to have, students had low access to those in the southern part of the district. And then finally, living near a pre-K program increases, and one other finding we had was living near a pre-K program obviously increases the likelihood of enrolling in that program, right? Again, fairly obvious point. However, to the extent that, you know, what the, I think why this is important is that if you, if you're in an area and you just don't live near a pre-K program, you're less likely to enroll. And as you'll see on the next couple of slides, this plays out for a couple of student subgroups. So in addition to doing a lot of geographic or spatial analyses, we also did some subgroup analyses. And so I'm just going to present you two of those subgroups. One is emergent bilinguals or English learners. I'm just going to refer to them as EB's because it's just easier for me. I'll get tongue tied. And then we'll also talk about black students. So starting at the top of this sort of circle, we'll go clockwise. The first thing we found for emergent bilingual students is that they're less likely to live near a pre-K program, right? So, and as we just learned, if you don't live near one, you're less likely to enroll in one at all, right? And I think this is particularly important because being an EB or an English learner is one of the ways that you qualify for free pre-K in Texas. So another area we found that, you know, emergent bilinguals tended to have less access to tech, technology resources on their campuses. So again, here we're talking about, talking about computer labs, dedicated IT staff, and devices. Another thing, and this is not unique to HISD, this is unique to the state of Texas, but because HISD has such a high number of emergent bilinguals and English learner students, we're also noticing that long, the sort of rate at which students are being labeled as long-term English learners, meaning they're English learners for more than five years, is increasing by a significant margin, right? It's like, pretty striking across the state of Texas how fast that's increasing. HISD is no exception to that. And again, they, it's not worse than the rest of the state, but, you know, we have a lot of, we have a lot of EB's in the HISD. Another area, and this is related to a survey we did of parents and students, is that if they took the survey in Spanish, and the survey, by the way, the survey was asking them about how easy it is for them to access a variety of resources, the wraparound services and other student supports. One consistent finding we found for everyone that took it in Spanish is that language remains a significant barrier to them accessing the resources that they're, that they're looking for. Relatedly, it's not, there's also a knowledge barrier there, which, again, it's hard to tease apart if the knowledge barrier is because of the language barrier, right? I think those two things are very related. And then the final thing for EB students is that they were less likely to have access to health resources. And when I say health resources now, I'm not just talking about health clinics. I'm actually also talking about school nurses. So emergent bilinguals tend to attend campuses that just have fewer of those resources. Now for black students, there's going to be some overlap here, but there are some, there are some interesting ones as well. So again, starting at the top. Black students are significantly less likely to apply for school choice, whether that's just open enrollment or magnet schools, early on in the process. Now, I know that process is, has changed the school year, and I think there's still a TBD about how that impacted who applies and how they apply and when they apply and where they apply. But at least historically, if you applied late in the process, you are way less likely to get one of your top choices for schools, right? Applying early was the single strongest predictor of getting your top choice in terms of your rankings, right? When you're ranking your 10 schools or however many it is now, I think it's still 10. Similar to EB students, black students also just had less access to technology resources on their campuses. Switching over to socio-emotional skills, black students were far more likely to have assert, high assertiveness, being, being seen as, what's the word? I'm blanking on the word, but sort of, just sort of, it's not a good thing, right? It's they're being disruptive or they're, right? And this was particularly the case if they had a white teacher, which, again, was more likely to trigger disciplinary action, where you might say, a white student that's being assertive would, would just, you know, they're just being assertive, right? They're effectively communicating their feelings or emotions or whatever it is. Another thing we noticed is that black students are, benefit particularly from having experienced teachers on their campuses, like far more than other students. However, they're less likely to have experienced teachers on their campuses. That's measured by years of experience. We looked at a few other metrics. We also looked at advanced degrees and a couple other things. But for black students, it really seemed to be years of experience played a large role. And that was independent of race, by the way, whether the teacher was black or white. And then finally, black students are more likely to live in STEM deserts. And again, I want to stress that this is particularly the case for high schools where, for STEM classes that are associated with the STEM endorsement pathway, which is potentially limiting their ability to do the STEM endorsement pathway in the first place and also potentially limiting their post-secondary options if, if they're interested in the STEM major. All right. And then the last thing I'll say before I turn it back over to y'all for questions is this is really not a finding from any of the studies. This is just sort of a, kind of a pattern we noticed because in this, this, this project spanned a variety of departments over multiple years. We had a lot of opportunity to work with a lot of people at HISD. And some of the things that we found was that oftentimes, data aren't stored in like a central location, and that's no fault of research and accountability, to be very clear. Allison is one of our greatest allies in sort of helping us get the data we need to do this work. But sometimes they don't even, like, research and accountability doesn't even know that a particular dataset or a set of data exists. And I think part of the challenge that we've seen, at least, is that it's difficult to campus, it's difficult sometimes to quantify campus variation in access to programming and also participation rates at a campus, because oftentimes, those datasets are stored at the campus themselves. And individual campuses will store the data in different ways. And if it's not centrally located, it becomes very difficult to actually get that data. So this is just a general observation that maybe there's, there's potential opportunity for concerted effort to centralize data systems and just make them more, not just useful for people, external folks like myself, but also useful for the district to, in terms of analyzing their own data. So I'll stop there and turn it back over to y'all for questions. I do want to give you one caveat that, please remember, this is like 15 or 16 different studies. I was personally only on a couple of them, so I, I may have to defer to ask you to submit a referral if I can't, because I want to make sure you get the answers to your questions. So I'll do my best to answer what I know, but there might be some things that I'll say, please, please submit a referral, because I don't know. So thank you very much.
We're now ready for comments or questions from trustees. We will do two rounds of two minutes each. If an additional round is desired, that can be done with a motion, second, and board vote. Trustee Diggard?
Thank you.
It's just being slow.
I can hear you.
I can talk really loud.
That works.
Oh, yeah.
I can repeat your question. Okay. Oh, yeah, it's working now.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, it's not. Can you hear me? The button's not working. Okay. So my first question is methodology. Did you look at multiple years of data for trends?
Yeah, so we did for some studies and not for others. This is going to be one of the ones where I probably can't pinpoint exactly what years each study was. But generally speaking, the time period for the various studies was shortly before the pandemic and during the pandemic. So big caveat there, right? That's a challenge for any research that's going to happen in any context, particularly in schools, right? Pandemic is very disruptive. So I think that some of the work is sort of this school year or last school year when we're kind of coming out of it. So it really, it really just depends on the specific study. But I would say, I would probably say the majority of the work was, was done in the school year, that school year, that first normal school year, right? Which I guess is last school year.
So wasn't comparing trends over time?
Some of them were, but not specifically. And part of the reason for that was because it's very difficult to compare performance during the pandemic to after the pandemic, right? That's just, it's just a very challenging shock to sort of, sort of control a way, you know? Use methods to sort of say, okay, here's the pandemic effect, and then we're left with the actual policy effect or whatever you're trying to understand. It's just very difficult to do that, yeah.
Thank you. Did you, you, you obviously looked at inequities between campuses. Did you also look for inequities that may exist within campuses? It's okay if the answer's no.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking through it. I think that, to the extent that there are, like, the subgroup analyses, when we're thinking about how are black students doing relative to, say, white students in some particular metric, that would be something that we would have looked, potentially looked across campuses, meaning that we didn't necessarily say, within this campus, how are white and black students doing? Within this campus, how are white and black students doing? You might just say, in the district overall, how are white and black students doing? Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I was, I was thinking more specifically, like, were there differentials? And, you know, for example, for our English language learners, access to GT in their campus compared to their non-English language learning peers? Or AP achievement between student groups within a particular campus?
Yeah.
Instead of between campuses?
I don't think we have that.
Okay.
I can, I can check on that, though, because I think that that is a very interesting question, and I wouldn't be surprised if we did some version of that. Some of the work that I did, which is not what you're asking, but just to give you an example around wraparound services, we did actually look very specifically at campus level, sort of differences within campus, how things doing. So that's something that, again, if you, if you want to talk more about that, please email me or, you know, I can.
Okay. And then for the administration of a couple of questions, how are you using this information to change systems and practices at the district level and campus levels to achieve district goals within the constraints? And, and then adding on to that, what adjustments are you making to the strategic plan and/or the budget?
I think we heard some of, some of the same insights earlier. We'll, we'll take a close look at it. And if there are major value adds that we know that exist in the, in the, in the study, we'll be utilizing those to, to make some of the modifications and adjustments in terms of how we spend and how we adjust for instructional practices and our building.
So this is new to you, and you haven't had an opportunity yet to make those adjustments, is what I'm hearing.
Correct. I think it's fairly, fairly new to all of us, for the most part. These are not things that we were able to act on, on the start of this school year, but these are things that we'll be able to make modifications for as we start the next school year.
I look forward to hearing this get incorporated in the goals and constraints conversation, progress monitoring and budget conversations. So thank you for this.
And one of the things I'll just, I'll just say as well is that part of our role or what we like to do is, so we do work with departments. So, you know, if we have some, if we have some research that's relevant to, say, student support services, right? We talk to student support services, and like, we work with them directly to, they're the people on the ground actually, you know, designing the policies and doing the work. So we definitely try to inform the folks that are actually making a lot of these decisions on the ground.
Thank you.
The major takeaways were, after analyzing data from, what was it, 60, 70,000 students in the district, we identified a lot of unmet needs in the areas such as mental health, and so they worked with the department to create a strategy on how we can engage additional partners through that work, and went above and beyond that, and in fact convened dozens of community organizations that came together and reviewed the data with them, and as a result, we're now entering into new partnerships at no cost to the district that are going to bring those services. So it is a very distinctive approach in working with HERC, because it is that collaboration between departments and their team to make things better, so to improve our practices, and not just, here's a report that you all have to look at in your table when you want.
Trustee Kathy Blueford Daniels?
Okay, my mic is not working.
Try and do this? Not working?
I can, I lose my own voice. So, thank you for this, Cory. I just wish that perhaps you could present this HERC information at the beginning of the year for the board, the middle of the year for the board, and the end of the year for the board. It's like driving a car and, and entering GPS. When we get to, we have a destination programmed, our destination are board constraints, our board goals and constraints. And so if we have this information, in my opinion, we can tailor our questions, what, what, trustee Diggard go? Oh, we could tailor our questions to where the actual issues and needs are. So we won't spend a lot of time, I mean, this has been some really, really good information for, for me, on page, on page 14.
For the English, the emergent bilingual students?
Yes, and, and the fact that they're less likely to live, live near pre-K. A lot of people are talking about having those pre-K, having that, beginning learning, introduction to learning environment, that's important for third grade. Okay, so let's move on, I'm going to tell you how to get there. Let's go to page 15. You talked about the black students, thank you. See, this, in my opinion, this HERC information tells us where we should concentrate our efforts, not try to tell someone how to drive their car, and when to stop and put gas in it. And a lot of this, sometimes the comments are telling, are, are, are telling the superintendent, this is your destination, we gave you your goals, now we're going to, now we need you to stop and put gas at point A, B, C, and D. That's not our responsibility. But this narrows it down, so thank you for this, Cory, I really do appreciate it, and thank you, Dr. Mattern, you always try to give us the information that we need. Thank you.
Trustee Cruz?
Okay, my mic's not working either, so...
I got you.
Teach your voice. On slide six, and thank you as well for the presentation, number two, can you define how, what that means, how Yalor...
Sure, so, it's going to vary across studies, right? What we determine is an outcome. I think that because this, this study, because the pandemic was very rude and interrupted this research project, I think that we, for lack of a better term, undervalued academic outcomes. Not undervalued, that's not the right word, but we, we shied away from those a little bit, because in a lot of the work that we were doing, even outside of the equity project, we had ongoing projects that were looking at academic outcomes, and you, you just, it kind of, you know, it kind of ruins your ability to do that, especially if you're trying to do something over time. That doesn't mean we didn't look at any academic outcomes, but again, it's going to be very project-specific, so, and I would say that the outcomes definitely tend to lean heavily towards access, and sort of opportunity, and I think that that's not, that wasn't necessarily intended initially, but it became almost a necessity because of the pandemic and the disruptions that it caused education. So, I don't know if that was an exact answer to your question, but, yeah.
I guess so, my question would be, can I borrow the...
No, you've just got, if you stop talking, you'd be in...
One thing I will say is, just, just to give you an example of an actual academic outcome we did look at, is for the LTALs, the long-term English learners. In some other work that we did, we did, in conjunction with this work, we did find that being an LTAL is associated with a variety of negative outcomes, particularly in high school, right? And those are academic outcomes, as well as attainment outcomes, in terms of graduation and dropout, things like that. So, so again, that's one example of a study where we were able to look at some of that, but to anything that was, we started during the pandemic, it just becomes really challenging.
When you say LTAL, you mean long-term?
Thank you, sorry, yeah, long-term English learners, my apologies, yeah.
So kind of going back to the student outcome piece, so it sounds like, because I remember this conversation starting very early on in 2020, that there was focus on student achievement.